Besides those in the bottom.
In your mailbox.
In your mailbox.
Is it open?
Is it?
It was open when I left it open.
Okay, we're gonna get started this. All right, it's Tuesday, November the 16th, we're monthly city council meeting. Six thirty-one. We'll call Ryland, I course.
Dana Bergner. Lori Novak.
And Lizzie's here, so. All right. We have an agenda and just a couple of quick items that we need to clarify. One is under E O C. The government director, we need to double remove a double I, new member Geneva Day up to the first responders. And that will be V. We also need to update the agenda for ordinances and resolutions. This is twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine to be dash thirty. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty should be dash thirty-one. And we should add resolution. It's in your packet, it just needs to be updated on the agenda twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine, which is the one for the. Call for a public hearing on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one for our illiquid water fees that will be credited towards taxes. SS to the taxes. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Favor, signify by saying aye. Next item is our public forum. We have a three-minute time limit per person, the city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be burdened to city businesses and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request your comments be limited to three minutes because we'll be recognized only once. At this time, we ask that anyone who would like to address the city council, please step up to the podium. State your name and address and fill out the form that's provided on the podium. With that, does anybody like to speak?
My name is Brad Manning, address is fourteen forty-six Riverwood Court Southwest. And I'm president of the Riverbend Estates Home Owners Association. And the reason I'm here today is to just kind of formally mention the city council that today. Our HOA submitted a petition to be included in Phase One A of the wastewater system project. So kind of the impetus for that is that this summer, we, the transfer of control of the HOA was transferred over from Palmyer. And Meyer Companies to the neighborhood. And with that, Palmyer is no longer part of the HOA. And the neighborhood now owns and is responsible for the maintenance of the septic equipment, the community septic system. And it's our understanding that. One of the primary reasons we weren't included in Phase One A is because. Part of the developers agreement with Riverbend Estates between Meyer Companies and the city was that. Our neighborhood wouldn't be included in any municipal wastewater project for twelve years in order for the cost of the septic system to be included. But now because Paul's no longer part of the HOA and the HOA, we now own the septic system, like I said, we're asking for that clause to be terminated. So our petition lists other kind of rationale why we think would be beneficial for the city and the neighborhood to be included. And I just, I'm asking just for you to consider our petition, so thank you.
Thank you very much, we did receive the letter and we'll review with Joe, our city engineer. And city or Joe will probably provide you a response accordingly, so.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Second call for public forum. And third and final call for public forum. No more, we'll close the public forum at six thirty-six. Sheriff is not here for. Sergeant Chambers or for two other sheriff here, so we'll go to fire department, Dan Sunt.
Good evening. Going, all right, three runs. And mutually with Pine Island on the fifteenth medical and a mutually with Pine Island on the second. Dan's asking for approval of payroll for forty-six seventy-five. I don't know if that needs a vote or. Moving on, approval of bills, anchor promotions, I believe that bill was for fire prevention night. The next ones are for annual truck maintenance with fire safety. I think they do all of our trucks on an annual basis, so. And last but not least, the Hiawatha Snowseekers gambling application.
Before you talk about that, I'll make a motion that we approve. The anchor bills and all of the fire safety invoices listed on our agenda. Seconds in. These are just annual fire safety maintenance.
Yeah, they go through the pumps, they go through the generators, the equipment, tools, they maintain some, our. The compressor that fills our, our, our air tanks for our SCBA's, so yeah, a lot of good maintenance.
So those are the other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. It's approved.
The last item Dan's got on here is the Hiawatha Snowseekers gambling application. Little update with that. The Relief Association will be. Ending its gambling on February, so we reached out to the owners of Tilly's. And gave them a heads up, probably more notice than they needed, but we're being friendly. And said, come February, you'll need to find another organization. So they reached out, the owners of Tilly's reached out to Hiawatha. So that's what's going on, I think that's in the packet, their application.
Right.
But that's kind of, that's coming in February, so.
That's pretty solid that's gonna happen, or are you in just phase, is that still fifty-fifty or what's?
We made a decision to. Try and settle our lawsuit, our ongoing lawsuit. We made a decision last meeting to try and settle out of court for. Certain amount of money and we haven't heard back now, we're, we'll hear back here weeks to come.
So really this is a placeholder.
Yes.
Because it does take a couple of months.
Yes, legally we're supposed to give, yes, legally you're supposed to give them a month's notice while we're terminating our, our license. So we just give them a little bit more notice to get on board and get acquainted with the new group and so.
So right, I, I make a motion. That we approve the. Permanent application. By, from the Hiawatha Snowseekers. For gambling to be potentially conducted at Tilly's.
So Kane, would you say this is contingent?
Sorry. Sir, a second, the motion.
Second for discussion.
Go ahead.
So would you say this is contingent?
So.
Just so everyone understands.
Yeah, so right now, the Relief Association owes a certain amount of money. I don't want to get into details here, I don't know if I should, but we owe a certain amount of money. We're going after a certain person to recover those, that money. If that happens, if all plays out in our favor, we have received that money, we pay it back into our fund. And we could continue our gambling operation. We don't know if that will happen, so we're preparing for the worst. Preparing for the worst means no more gambling for Orinoco Fire Relief and. And that, that's what we're, that's what we told Tilly's, we told them, hey, this could happen. You better get somebody in, in mind. If that makes sense, I hope.
It does.
Yeah.
The contingency, so this is.
So is this something we would have to decide now or no?
I think this is more kind of an FYI, this could happen February.
Right, so Dave started the application, yes. Okay, Hiawatha, right, but we don't have to approve, not, nothing, this is an FYI, so table this till January, how about?
So my understanding was that. We did make a resolution. In our packet for tonight's discussion, that was requested. From Hiawatha Snowseekers. Cause they need to send the application in with a hundred and fifty dollar fee, non-refundable, that's their expense, of course. As well as a. Copy of the lease from Tilly's, I think, too. So that's all kind of preparation, that they're willing to take that. Initial monetary effort to do that.
Yes.
They're seeking our approval.
But.
To approve this application.
But if we approve it and then they end up having their plan go as, as follows, then we're stuck. And you're stuck, you don't get to do it anymore anyway, because you have not been replaced.
Some of these questions would probably be better suited for Pat, our gambling manager.
I just know it takes, from Jim, the gentleman that talked to us from Hiawatha, he just, because it takes two months to happen, to go through the process at the state level. That's why they were asking for approval to. To approve the application so they can submit it to state, if it happens, fine, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't. They're not gonna come in to do the gambling if Orinoco stays there. They're not taking over Orinoco directly, only if they cease gambling.
Correct, if we lose our license, Tilly's has the option to go with some other organization.
So really, we. To me, it, it sounds like we can approve it. It, it's a contingent application, it's contingent on whether they give it up or not, or they, they lose their license or not.
I'd say so, yes.
Mike, do you have any comments?
I don't really know, but I don't think you can contingent, prove it contingent, like you approve it or you don't approve it, it's a state form. So when they ask me to do the resolution, I just Google it to find a resolution, and cities pass resolutions like this all the time. What's to stop Tilly's from having more than one servicer, or more than one licensee, because they have. More than one licensee? I don't know, I haven't.
I don't know, I, I don't know, at all.
Yeah, so, so if we approve this tonight, then we're.
Then you.
We're committing.
If you look at the second, I don't have a, look at the second page of it, it's got a. You have to fill this out, city approval, so you fill that part out, you know, local unit of government must sign. And then. You send it to the county, oh no, you don't have to be, you're not in the township, so then you would provide this back to the applicant, the Snowseekers, and then they would send it to the state. I suppose they could choose not to send it to the state. But I think that would, I mean, I don't know anything about this, it seems like they think it's gonna take two months, so you might be stuck then. You know, there might not be any gambling there anyway if they do this, I don't know, I haven't researched it, I don't know. I thought that bars had more than one. Charity that they support, but some bars, I don't know, but.
Maybe that's the case, I. Currently, it's just the fire relief.
And they wouldn't want to split the. So I think it's, it's kind of an all or nothing, but you asked them to do this, right, the fire relief asked them to, told Tilly's and said, go do this, and so you.
We said, hey, potentially February, we're, we're gonna lose our license, heads up, why don't you find somebody you would like? And.
The other thing is, I don't know if you legally can deny it. I mean, what's the basis to deny, don't you have to, people fill out the application correctly?
How many days do we have?
Don't you have to?
I think. Granted.
The state to grant or deny the license, I mean, because the state does the review, we don't. I think our review is based on whether or not the application is filled out and the fee, fee is paid, they paid a fee, right? Application fee or something?
They will when they send their application to the state.
Yeah, I don't know how it works.
Well, me and Ryland were pretty shocked, we were just standing in the office and this guy came in and said he was taking over, so we were like, oh.
And I went over and talked to Tilly's and talked to Travis, and he's very much aligned with what's going on, he's, looks forward to, they just don't want a, a two-month period of no gambling.
Correct.
Essentially.
Correct.
At the same time, a ten percent that the city gets, we wouldn't be getting anything either.
Right.
On the form, it says it's any other organization conducting, conducting gambling at the site, and they say yes. So I'm taking that to mean that it is just as you said.
Yeah, I, I suspect that, I suspect more than one group, they can grant a license, and then you'll have two licensees selling different pull tabs essentially. I don't know, I think, I don't go to bars anymore since I have kids, but I used to go to bars, I think they got more than one. Licensees, I don't know. It's up to you, I mean, you can table it, we can figure that out, or you can grant it, or.
Well, I think Tilly's has the right to refuse who they want to, I think, correct, they can say. Orinoco stays on, this goes through the process, this goes away, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's the way Jim, the gentleman from Hiawatha sees it.
I, I think if we keep our gambling license, we will continue to, to function at Tilly's. But if we don't have a gambling license, Tilly's wants the opportunity to start, start February with this new organization.
So it's really contingent whether Tilly's accepts or not, right?
Well, we're not making decisions for Tilly's, Tilly's makes that decision, so.
Yeah, but that's, that's what I'm saying, it sounds like.
You know.
When it comes down to it, they can say, well, I do or I don't.
Yeah, and it gets into the state licensing, I mean, they send this to the state and then they do a review and they, they might have other approvals, all you, you just have to call the. It's the A G E D, the Alcohol Gaming Enforcement Division, they've got lawyers there and people that can answer these questions, I didn't, I thought this was all a done deal, you just asked for resolutions, I thought that was all needed, I didn't know. What the issue was, I guess.
I'm assuming that. The gambling Minnesota law will follow up on this application, probably talk to Tilly's too, so.
Right, I agree, I agree, you can probably.
Anything under the table here, I think it's just a matter of us as a city approving the application.
This is just a, did they fill out the application right, and then you approve it and send it to the state, the state does the review of.
No.
Yeah.
I don't see there's any city obligation here, liability at all.
No, no, I mean, I, I'm not sure if you properly fill out an application, we have the authority to deny, to unilaterally deny gambling applications. But, that being said, if it's kind of everybody's sort of talking about this as an agreement, that this is a, you know. Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know what to tell you.
Any other comments? Any others in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approved?
Sorry about that, I wish, I wish Pat was here, he could have explained that fewer words.
First responders?
All right.
We didn't, I don't think we've made a motion to approve the payroll back in the fire department.
No, no.
Make a motion, we approve the fire department payroll for four thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Comments, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. First responders?
Yeah, runs four cities, six township, we need approval for the payroll amount of three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars.
Make a motion to approve the payroll for three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, second for first responders.
Any comments? Not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, approved?
The third item, new AEDs, we're looking at purchasing three new AEDs for the ambulance, one for the fire truck and one for. First responder fire truck, that combination truck, so. Three new AEDs, and that will be coming out of the first responders budget.
Is this a, you're waiting for invoice or how much is it or?
I'm sorry, I'm just going off the meeting the other night, I didn't know there wasn't anything in the packet.
There, there's not, so maybe, that's okay, he might, a lot of times he'll send it in December or something.
Okay.
So kind of an FYI then.
They're looking at purchasing new AEDs, I thought they had the information in front of you, my bad. Moving on, new member Daniel Johnson, like approval to. Approve her as a first responder.
I move to approve Daniel Johnson as a first responder and a firefighter, or just first responder?
He's already approved as a firefighter.
Oh, that, okay.
Form and all the appropriate. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And there's also another new member, Geneva Day, she was under the E O C, she was moved up. We'd like to approve her as a first responder as well.
Move to approve Geneva Day as a first responder, second.
Comments, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved?
And then lastly, for me, right now, approval of the payroll for the E O C of two hundred dollars.
Move to approve payroll for two hundred dollars for the E O C.
Other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Orders, resolutions? By voice vote? First one is resolution accepting the bids for the wastewater system and water improvements. Joe, do you have any comments?
Not, no, the resolution's in the packet, fairly straightforward. Award, or resolution, basically awarding the contracts for the wastewater project, there's obviously three contracts. The first contract would be awarded to stop construction in the amount of twenty million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. The second contract is for essentially the south half of the sanitary sewer watering improvements within town, that would be awarded to. Fitzgerald Excavating and Trucking for a total of nine million, one hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-four cents. And the third contract, the low bidder was also Fitzgerald Excavating and Trucking with a low bid. Low, low bid plus alternate number one, that was for the. Enhanced control panels for, panels for the grinder station systems. And the total of the base bid plus the alter number one was eight million, thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. And so. We are nearing the end of our award window, we bid these projects at the end of August and early September and. Things are coming together in terms of, we submitted all the documentation for PFA. For the loan and grant applications, and that stuff is moving and moving forward and. Also see later in the, on the agenda that we did execute an agreement with Orinoco Estates today. And the township previously for them to be part of the wastewater system as we've planned. So things are coming together, which is great, and this is kind of what we've talked about for, for quite some times, any questions?
I make a motion that we approve. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven, accepting the bids for the wastewater system and water improvements. Second. Any other comments? So. Milestone day, I think it's. It's great for the city of Orinoco with environment or citizens and. Growth as well, and I. Want to thank Joe and Stan Tech for getting us to this point, and the Stan Tech staff was. A lot of work and time into this, not only the design, but working through the agreements with Orinoco Estates and all of the application forms and. Documentation that goes with it to get the PFA loans for the local share, that's a lot of work, so.
Thank you, we all, all put a lot of work into it, Mike and all of you folks, and it is a great achievement, achievement in my opinion. Really is.
Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I thought it was voice vote.
Okay. I'm sorry, voice vote.
Aye.
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 Sorry, got too excited. All right. Next one is resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight. And this puts in place. What for assessing, assessments in our, in December and. Mike, you asked that this resolution. Be put together for, we're working with Renee. For this resolution.
I gotta see it.
Was, was your intent for this resolution to be in the December packet?
Oh, yeah.
Renee's not available, she's ill today, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so you, this is just, this is in the assessment toolkit, so this is the first of a series of resolutions you're supposed to be adopting, so you adopt this one tonight and then. You're declaring that there's unpaid charges, the one thing I do note though is usually there's, I think you can still adopt it, but usually there's an attachment. There's another of the, of the actual, oh, there we go, yeah, okay, yeah. So you're declaring them and then you have to bring another resolution back to actually order the assessments, but this is the declaration. It should say. Yeah, so this is, this is from the toolkit, so League Minnesota Cities has a special assessment toolkit, and you just follow those. I mean, I, I honestly never prepare them, this is probably the first one I've ever prepared, you just, this is, I just took it and formatted it to the leagues. You know, they have a order, you know, F A Q and an explanation of how to do it, and then you just do that. So this is usually, I guess, to, unless you don't know about this, we usually do them once a year, you know, usually do them at the end of every year, put all the assessments on the assessment roll.
So the next resolution, just for your information, we're gonna talk about this, Lizzie, you can show him the dash twenty-nine?
I, I've got the packet now, I'll try to find it.
If you look at the dash twenty-nine, it lists. It's, it's a calling for a public hearing. These people still have the opportunity.
Right.
To incent one to pay, but if they don't pay, then they'll go into the public.
So, and this is going to get into the Orinoco Estates agreement, one of the agreements that I'm going to explain later. And it's, it's related to this issue. So basically the assessment process, so.
This is order assessment.
Yeah, I understand that, but we're having the Orinoco Estates waive their right to appeal the assessment. It's kind of a related thing. I'll talk about it later, but basically you have the right to appeal your assessment, right? Due process, you, you, you give notice. We do this first in assessments declaring. Declaring the assessment and ordering the clerk to prepare the necessary documents. That's what the resolution is tonight. Then you're going to have another resolution. Then you give a resolution setting a public hearing. You'll have the public hearing and people can object to their assessment. And you do what's known as pass on the objections. This is the statutes, chapter four twenty-nine. You just, you hear the, and you could, you could grant them. They could say something like. That water bill was when I was in Florida and my pipes burst and I didn't know that because I was gone all winter. And then you could. Amend the assessment role at that point, grant their objection, or you could pass on their objection. So that's the process. And so later on, Orinoco Estates has signed an agreement. Where they're agreeing to be assessed for the cost of the facility by contract and they're contractually waiving their right to have that, to do that. So that's why it kind of relates to those issues earlier. And I'll explain that a little later. So that all this does is set the public hearings. You have to have a public hearing. A lot of times, nobody speaks at those public hearings. You only have five or six on the assessment roll. Nobody shows up and you just adopt it. Sometimes somebody shows up and objects and then you listen to their objection and you vote to pass on the objection or. Sometimes you grant them, I guess.
Cold scenarios.
Right.
Okay, so I move to pass resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty.
Second.
Second.
Hey, any other comments? Seeing that, all those in favor, by voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Prove. Next item in your packet is resolution twenty-one dash twenty-nine, which is calling for a public hearing for December twenty-first. Six. Thirty, six thirty-five, beginning of our meeting. Make a motion we approve resolution. Page twenty-one dash twenty-nine.
Second.
Comments? Any others in favor? Signify by a voice vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Prove. Next item is resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty. Your vacancy. Lizzie's, uh, council member position expiring. Accepting her resignation, I should say. That's effective November seventeenth.
Tomorrow. What resolution is it?
Uh, twenty twenty-one dash thirty.
We have gambling in this.
Okay, you missed the first part of the meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
This is a twenty-nine, your agenda slash thirty.
Okay.
And what thirty is really thirty-one.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
That's one of the agenda items we have there, so. So there's a couple, um, items that we need to correct on the, uh. Resolution, the, uh, the first paragraph, the first whereas. Uh, which resigned to receive on the city council effective November seventeenth. And then down in Nell Airport, be resolved. It's effective November the seventeenth. The term that expired in January third, so and we'll get that. Updated before we sign it. But I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty.
Second.
So I guess that's today, right? I mean, that, that's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Okay, good. And if it was today, then I would feel like you vote after, later on in the.
That's why we change it to the seventeen.
Yeah, okay, we're good.
Well, Lizzie, we've enjoyed having you on the council. Wish you the very best in Texas.
Thanks.
And, um.
Thanks for the opportunity to serve the community. It means a lot to me.
Thanks for stepping up last February and interviewing and application and so.
I'm hopeful that the person who takes, takes this place. Appreciates the community and the opportunity as much as I did and is looking forward to. Uh, the opportunity for growth for the community and, um, just seeing what we can do here. There's a lot of potential and. Um, I wish you guys all the best because this is, uh, this is a job you do because you feel really passionate about it and it's a lot of work, so.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Reluctantly, aye.
Next item is resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one. Here's the, uh. Providing a permit. For Hyawatha Snowseekers. Make a motion to approve twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one. Second.
I'll second.
Comments? Great that Hyawatha could step in and continue gambling and will. The ten percent donations will still. Uh, come to the city as well. So I think whoever's in there. Will either continue or with a, with a new organization, so. Any other comments? All those in favor, voice vote.
Aye.
Aye. Prove. And it's water and sewer. Yeah, this was a. We received a, uh. There were some emails back and forth between. B A and Joe and I regarding our. Uh, outstanding general fund, water improvement fund. Of an outstanding balance. This was a debt service, considered a debt service, although, although it was internal. Uh, to the city that we borrowed from our general fund and also from our water utility, so. We need to pay that back. The city needs to pay that back. So we had our auditing company, Andrew, from Smith and Schaefer, put together. Excuse me, I asked him to put together a five-year, a seven-year. And a ten-year. Payback summary. And, uh. See the annual payments. I think last year we. We. Paid back twenty-three thousand or something like that, twenty-four thousand. So it was kind of slipping away and they brought to our attention, which is great because I really hadn't thought about it either. So I think the. The ten-year, in my opinion, I think is a little. Far out there than what we really would like to take care of and get rid of. We could pay, the callback is that we could pay it off right now, but I think that's kind of between your. It's, it's not putting us in a favor, a very favorable life. I mean, we have the funds, but at the same time, we're. We're going into this big sewer project. I think it'd be good to keep our general fund as healthy as we can. So the payback. Well, the seven-year was ninety-six hundred dollars each year. Ten-year was sixty-seven hundred dollars. It just stretches out for ten years and the five-year was thirteen thousand. Four hundred and seventy-five dollars. My opinion, I, I think the seven-year would be, the seven-year payback period, you could almost. In year six, we could pay it back a year later too, or year, pay the seven-year off in the six-years, we can just. Be one payment that'd be a six years versus the total of seven years to pay it back. We're. Paying back two loans. One is the water and sewer improvement. For in case the seven-year, it's a ninety-six hundred dollar payment. And in the case of the, uh, general fund, it's twenty-three thousand, so a total of thirty-three thousand dollars each year for seven-year payback. In the case of a ten-year, it's twenty-three thousand dollars. In the case of five-year, both the general fund and the wastewater fund payments would be like forty-six thousand.
There's no interest on any of this, right?
No interest.
So why don't we go with the longer term? I mean, it doesn't do us any benefit to pay it off earlier.
For the ten-year?
Yeah.
Because we can make money on our money in the bank. Not that we can make a lot, but still. It's something.
It's, uh, ten thousand less than with the seven-year. Seven years, thirty-three thousand and the ten-year is twenty-three thousand. Paid off in twenty thirty. We can, we can start with those payments, the ten-year and if we get to year six or year seven, we're down to twenty thousand, twenty-six thousand. If you can pay it off sooner too. This, here again, I'm throwing confusion. I'm looking, looking at the payback. So in the ten-year payback, we look at the water sewer improvement, in year seven, we have a balance of twenty thousand, two hundred and thirteen. If you look at the ten-year payback to general fund and year seven, we have forty-nine thousand, so it's still sixty-nine thousand, so we could. We still continue to pay it off, but we might be in a better position. Twenty-three thousand dollars. Payback to the water sewer of sixty-seven hundred dollars and sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The general fund is a total of twenty-three thousand dollars each year for ten years. And that'd be very similar to what we did last year. Any questions? Five years, seven years.
I still think if we are not paying interest on it, we should do the ten-year. Just gives us more money.
You'll make the motion, right?
So I, I will move to. Choose the ten-year payback options for the, well, well.
Maybe twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents. So there's a, the ten-year payback to water and system, water and sewer. It's a great option. Ten-year payback to general fund.
Alright, so we want to do ten-year paybacks for both of these.
Right.
Ten-year payback on both, to the both the water sewer and the general fund. That's a motion.
Yeah, we need to pay back to both of them, yeah, each year.
Okay.
Yeah. That totals twenty-three thousand.
Oh, I see. So you're summing the sixteen, three, seven, nine, fifty plus six thousand, seven, thirty-seven, ninety, which gets us to a yearly payment to both of those.
Right, we need to pay both. Pay both of them back at the same time.
Okay.
The twenty-three, three, ninety-nine. What you're asking me to put in.
It's a summary of those two.
I don't, can you amend the motion? Don't trip on the court, right?
This is seven years, that twenty-three.
Here's the one fund, sixty-seven, ten payments of sixty-seven. And the payback to the general fund is ten payments at six, sixteen thousand, so it's a total of each year for twenty-three, for ten years.
So in my motion, can't I just have it say, using the ten-year payback? For both?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I want to do.
Jimmy, second?
Yes. Comments? Favor of the motion to pay back the general fund and water sewer improvement fund on a ten-year payback period. Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Make sure that twenty. Twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents in the motion.
Yep.
Okay, um. Water sewers or. Water treatment system use agreement to receive Orinoco and Orinoco Estates public home community. There is a draft. In our packet. And. There was a agreement signed this afternoon. That. Emailed to us. And it's on your desk.
It's in the stack, ladies.
So Joe or Mike, you guys have really spent, Mike has spent a lot of time enjoying us too on the agreement because this is version twelve or thirteen. Yeah, that's the main thing. We did get a final version with Orinoco Estates management, so.
So the agreement that we have on, that was signed today by Orinoco Estates is. Really similar to what's in the packet. Um, some, some details have changed in terms of, uh, you know, definition of what a weather flow is and, and. Some other items related to the different entities that own Orinoco Estates and provide them some flexibility in terms of transferring that property to. Other entities that, that H A S Capital owns. Essentially, they are the. They want some flexibility in ter- terms of how they finance things and how they do that, but by and large. You know, the agreement is, is similar to what you have in your packets and, and really the agreement spells out the. Terms and conditions of, um. How Orinoco's, Orinoco's, the city of Orinoco permits Orinoco Estates, uh, use of the treatment facility and how. The maintenance obligations are divided up and how, um, utility fees are structured and how, um, fees will be calculated. Sets a limit on how much they can discharge to the treatment facility and if they don't comply with that limit, penalties associated with that. So. There really is a lot of information in here. Um, I don't know if the council wants to go into detail on any of it. Um, we've had a talked about the agreement with Sewer and Water Committee and then again, it was in the packet. Are there any? Are there any questions or items that council wants to discuss or maybe even Mike wants to point out?
I was gonna bullet point for important parts, but maybe people have questions first.
I would like to say, good job.
It was a.
A lot.
It was a lot.
Yeah, so I guess I would just say, this is a unique agreement, like our firm has never done an agreement like this. We do agreements. Sewer cooperation agreements between cities and other cities and between cities and other townships, like entire townships. But barely do we do an agreement between, I'd say never, between a city, Orno, and one landowner within another corporate entity. That's an odd, that's an oddity. So this was a, we have sample agreements that I, I drew from, but largely had to be drafted, kind of pieced together and. You know, put together. So I think there is some important points, you know, it's a long agreement, most of it, about half of it's attachments. The agreement itself is only fifteen pages, maybe or. Fifteen pages, yes, oh no, that's not right. It's nineteen, eighteen pages really, so it's not terribly long, but here are the important points. Important points are that they're agreeing to abide by the city's utility code. And the terms of the utility code that we previously adopted. Now, them agreeing to do that, you still don't have jurisdiction to enforce that code, because it's in a different. Not in the city, in the township, so we have a separate agreement later on in the packet today that. The township has agreed to adopt our utility code and allow us to enforce or have them enforce it against. Orno State's and that could be enforce all kinds of provisions in it, like you can't flush contaminants down the toilet and that's a fine if you do that. Well, how are we gonna collect that fine if they're not in the city? You know, we can't just go, the assessment role thing I explained earlier. You can charge them, if they don't pay the charge, you can assess them, that's what we're gonna do, a city resident, how you do that with a township resident. Can't do that, there's no legal authority, but the township has the legal authority to do that, so without the townships, I mean, when this first came up, I have a lot, a lot of problems with this. If the township wouldn't have signed that agreement, agreeing to do the assessments for us, so they're gonna be our, facilitate our assessments, we're gonna prepare the documents, send it to them. They're going to assess the, the cost of the sewer project, which is the most important part. But then on an ongoing basis, that contract, not this contract, says they'll assess every year if there's unpaid. Fees, I think what you have to understand is that's very unlikely here, and the reason why that's very unlikely is it's not the individual mobile homeowners that own the property, they're renters essentially. It's the mobile home community, this H A S capital and entities that they own that pay the tax bill. And so they pay the bill and then they seek, they evict people or they, you know, increase rates or whatever to get their money back. So, but we, we needed to have some ability to do that, especially for damage to the sewer system, so. Like, you know, it's probably very, very unlikely, but if there's damage to the sewer system and the M P C A imposes a. Twenty five thousand dollar fine on the city, we have to be able to recoup that if we can prove that that was caused by their parcel. So that's, so these all kind of fit together, that's one of the most important things. The other important thing to me is. This is really complicated, I'm just gonna go over it very broadly, but annexation, usually you never want to extend sewer services to any township parcel. Ever, until they're after they're annexed, because once you do that, that's gonna make it more difficult for future annexations, if you have a contested case annexation, because. If they contest it, the administrative judge will say, well, the main argument cities have is it's better for the environment and we can more efficiently provide services and we have to annex to do that. But if we're already providing services to this parcel without annexing, they'll say, well, wait a minute. You just did that by contract with them, just do it by contract with everybody, you don't need to annex. And the reason that's bad is you want the tax base, you know, if they're gonna start building giant housing developments right out in the township. They're driving on your streets, they're using your library, they should pay taxes and they're essentially city residents, there's. But we mitigated those risks in this agreement and I, I became okay with it because we've mitigated the risks, so the mitigation is. We limited the, in the Orno State's agreement, we limited their ability to expand. To a very specific wastewater flow limit that Joe had negotiated over like three years or more possibly. And, and so that's more capacity than they need right now, like they have so many mobile home units. And that might be half or a percentage or a third, so they're planning on expanding, in fact, they told us they bought, they have a purchase agreement for a neighboring parcel, but. So you don't wanna sign an agreement like that, because once you're, once you're expanding, you know, they could expand forever out in the township and we don't want that. So we limited their geographic area to the two parcels they currently own, one of which houses their detention pond currently. The other house is the current park, and then there's two adjacent parcels, that would be the logical parcels, and the reason for that is kind of an engineering issue with the lift station. So the location of the lift station, which is what they need to pump the sewage to the facility, is, is expensive and it's located in a certain spot, so they probably couldn't. Go expand across the township anyway, but we wanted to make sure that was in the agreement, so it's limited to those parcels, it's limited by a flow limit. It's limited to the class of property that can be serviced to mobile homes or. Buildings customarily incidental to that, such as a community center within the mobile home community, so that wouldn't be a mobile home, but if it's something like that. Or a bathroom facility, community bathroom facility, so we're limiting the class, the geographic, the, the flow limit. And that's, and that's basically it, but that's, that's pretty good, I mean, that's, you're limiting it, so then that administrative logic, you can't really say that, we can say, well, look. We did limit it, we limited it in all these kinds of ways and that's not the type of development that the city would want in the city anyway. So it's, we've mitigated the risks appropriately there, so that's one important thing. The other important thing, but the most important thing is this. Once you do this, you can never undo it. Once you're providing an essential service to a resident in Minnesota. You can never cut the sewer off and say, we no longer wanna provide you sewer, you can never do that, so this is a forever decision. In the city, two hundred years from now, we'll be providing sewer to that property. There's case law that bears that out, it's, it's outside of your authority to move it back, so there's a, there's a termination clause in this agreement, but. Realistically, you can't, you can terminate this agreement, you can't terminate sewer services to the property. And so the city really wouldn't wanna terminate this agreement probably. Ever, because it protects us by them paying all these fees and stuff, so there is risks to this, I mean, there is risks to doing this, but. I mean, it was kind of baked into the plan of the financing for the whole project and they're paying like a percentage of the project, so we mitigated those risks. As best we can, and I think appropriately mitigated them, I would say. We've protected the city in terms of damage to the system, just the other reason we need this agreement, I've already talked about that, I think we've crafted language that. Is good, we've limited the type of development, I mean, I don't think you wanna provide sewer out in the township to commercial development in this, or, or industrial specifically. You don't even have industrial in the city, so it prohibits that. So, you know, it's acceptable to do this as long as you understand those things, you know, and, and, and there's other bad things other than annexation, you can get bad zoning out in the township that you can't really control. We don't have zoning authority out there, so once they're expanding to be zoned really poorly and that could affect the system, but that's. Probably relatively unlikely, as long as they stay within that geographic service area. So that's basically the highlights of it from my perspective. Oh, I guess one other thing, if, so they, during the negotiations, the reason this, this got signed today at like noon. This was, we went back and forth many times and they were very, I don't think they were being intentionally difficult, it was just. This was, I mean, they're, this is a big corporation, they do a lot, they're busy and they just didn't really pay, pay as much mind. But one thing that they did pay mind to is an increase in the limit, so. You know, they wanted. To be able to increase above that fifty five thousand gallons and that was one thing we, we absolutely cannot do and we, we kept it there, so you'll notice. So this, if you think logically through this, you can't, I just told you, you can never shut off sewer services, once you provide it, you're done, never shut them off, well, what's to stop them from just going? Building crazy out there, I know how to stop it, well, you stop it by the geographic service area. And you could sue them in court and say, you must stop that development, you know. And that would ultimately end them in court, but also there's penalties built in here, so if they go over the limit. And there's measurements that Joe can talk about, but I don't think he really needs to, it's, there's a way to measure it, an average daily use and they measure it and if they go over, they have a three. We conceded one thing, we gave them a three thousand gallon per day. Kind of buffer, so, you know, if they go a little bit over that one month, for whatever reason. They wouldn't get penalized, that was important to them, because they back all their loans from Freddie Mae and Fannie Mae. Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, and they, they don't allow penalties to be built, so, but then after that, there's penalties that ramp up, up to five thousand dollars a month. Which is not insignificant, I mean, that's a lot, I mean, they, they immediately said they would take that out, we wouldn't take it out. So we tiered it a little bit, they get the first three thousand overage for free, then the next two thousand is twenty five hundred, and then thereafter it's five thousand. So you, you got those penalties, now, the reason we did that is, Joe was telling me that, you can have the exact number, but it's like, the capacity of the, the facility you're building is like four hundred and ninety thousand gallons. And we're talking about three thousand, we gave them, so I, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, it was. Statistically insignificant, I would say. And you're probably gonna, if you expand beyond that, you'll have to expand the facility anyway in twenty years, whatever, so. So those are the, the highlights from my perspective, and there's a lot of other important things in here, but those are the most important things. And we've done the best we can to fix those issues to. You know, protect the city interests, I guess.
So Mike, when you said it's, it's an agreement, you know, with the township, is that Orno? Is Orno State's in Orno Township?
Yeah, so this, there's two separate agreements, there's this agreement with the company, the company of those states and then, but this agreement references that agreement. I need that agreement to do, because townships have governmental authority to do certain things we can't do as a city, so, yes, we have, there's multiple agreements here, but yeah.
So that's yours, that's, that's, this is the one, Orno State's.
Correct.
But I guess one question I would have, so when the time comes that we annex the township area over across from the ball field?
Right.
This agreement, this other agreement is already in place then, or do we have to do another one?
This, yeah, so, yeah, so.
Cause it's.
Good question, that's a good question, so this agreement would be irrelevant, the one with Orno State's, cause that's not the same location.
Right.
We would, we wouldn't need an agreement with the township, because we'll be annexing it before we extend sewer services.
Okay, right.
And do you have an orderly annexation agreement already in place with the township that would encompass that area?
Yeah, okay, the, the only way is if they would contest it, you know, but I think we're pretty good, I think we've done enough in this agreement to make it, I don't think they would contest it. I guess, but if they did, we're in pretty good position to refuse service, services unless they annex, which is what you want, I mean, if they're gonna like river bend the states, I don't know. I don't know what housing development's over there, but if there's just an expansion of an existing housing development and you've got. Three to five hundred thousand hour homes, you know, and they're right across the road in the township, that ought to be in the city, they're gonna expand. Or they expand out there under township zoning without sewer services, yeah, so.
In the area that I'm thinking, I don't think there's any room for expansion.
Right, yeah, so, but then, I mean, you know, Joe, one of Joe's slides of like a year ago, I thought there was like in phase two or phase one B plans for expansion. In, in the township and he mentioned that and that triggered in my head, well, but I remember the map, it was right, it's right by the city, basically.
Basically, we surrounded it already, so, yeah.
Right, so I don't, I mean, yes, any future development other than in the geographic service area in this agreement, which is limited to mobile homes only, basically. And in those four parcel ID numbers, which is in a map in this agreement, beyond that, you're gonna have to annex any parcel that wants sewer service. I'm gonna basically say you have to do that, there could be exceptions to that, obviously, but you don't wanna be, generally speaking, cities never wanna be doing. You never wanna be, ever wanna be doing that. I think this is unique, cause it's a, a large mobile home community. Which is not something you'd wanna annex for tax base reasons and other reasons, and it's not directly adjacent to the city either, right? So it's kind of out in the township.
Close proximity to the treatment facility, right.
Ultimate service area too, so. So there's, there's more at play, but I think we mitigated those risks and you're right, I mean, no, I, I think your question's more about the other agreement and no, I don't think that agreement would affect what you're suggesting at all. It relates to this.
Yeah, just two more real quick comments, big picture comments, you know, Orno State's is essentially eleven percent of the treatment. Facility capacity and so they, some essentially are paying eleven percent of the treatment facility project cost plus a hundred percent of the cost to convey their wastewater to the treatment facility. So that equates to about eight hundred and forty one thousand five hundred dollars, so that's what they are paying. The city of Orno is taking out a loan through P F A. That will essentially finance that eight hundred and forty one thousand dollars and Orno State's will pay a hundred percent of that loan cost over a twenty year term at about a two. Two percent interest, so they're paying their share, but we're financing it through the P F A for them, but they're paying for all of it. The other important point is, Orno State's has quite a few users, right now they've got about two hundred and fifteen units. Each one of those units is point, point eight, equal to residential units and so, day one, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna be a rate pair. And they'll be a rate pair forever and they're essentially on the same rates, get, not essentially, they are on the same rate schedule as everybody else here will be. In, in the community and so, having additional users in close proximity to the treatment facility helps pay for things and they're essentially also paying for their. Proportionate share of the capital improvements, we have, of course, shared our grant funds for them, but having them as part of the project help make the case for the grant fund, so it all kind of makes sense. So that's a lot of information about a complicated agreement, are there other questions we could answer?
One more point and then I'll be done, so the other part of this is. They're gonna assess and that's really important, so. You know, you're gonna get this, the eight hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, you do not want this capital company owing you eight hundred thousand dollars that you're backing a P F A loan with. Cause what if they don't pay, how do you get the money? So if this was inside the city, you just assess it, right, like you're assessing all these properties in the city. They would just be another assessment, so Orno Township will be doing that for you and one, once you assess that. Those parcels, the two parcels that they currently own. You know, that, that attaches to the parcels and it's superior lien to something like a mortgage with Benny Mae. You know, so if they go into foreclosure, you have a superior right to collect, you collect it like taxes. So you have a statutory superior right and that's why you have to, you, you basically have to do that this way. So, and the township agreed to do that on your behalf, we'll go through that agreement, Orno State's didn't care.
That's the next item on our agenda.
So they, they, it's referenced in this agreement, I won't talk about it twice, but they agreed to do that and both parties agreed and this really should be done by a special assessment, so. That's how you're gonna guarantee to get the money back, to pay back that loan.
So do we need to vote? Anything on this, or is this, this is a done deal?
Well, we would want you to consider approval of the agreement.
So I would like to approve the agreement between Orno and Orno State's for the wastewater project.
Second that. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, seeing everybody saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Prove. The next item is what Mike just made reference to is this agreement with the township to collect those assessed values against the Orno State, should that happen or occur?
Yeah, and I, I think the important thing, just as a teaching moment, if, this is the same template agreement we use all the time. For people who want things, like if they have a private roadway and they want the city to pave it, we would say, sure, we'll pay it and you gotta sign this agreement. Consent to us assessing it and waiving your right to appeal, because you're asking us to do it. Orno State's is essentially asking us to do this, they're asking us to do all this work and. Get the loan that we can get so that they can have sewer services and they're agreeing to pay it, there's no reason they should appeal that, right? Cause they're asking us to do it, similar to the private roadway owner asking us to pave it. So this is the same document we use and it basically gives them, I mean, they could technically still appeal, but this agreement would mean they would never be able to successfully appeal. So that's, that's what this is and why, why we're doing that.
I make a motion that we approve the. People are local and Orno County agreement for enforcement of. Code and specifically assists Orno State's. Any other questions? And then all those in favor, seeing if I was saying aye. Inside of this, a PFA administrative charge. For the piece of grants point source implementation grant money for seven million dollars, which is. A fee of point five percent or equivalent of thirty-five thousand dollars. We need to authorize city staff to cut a check, send to PFA after council approval. These funds are not PFA reimbursable or state revolving fund loan eligible. So this comes from our water utility or CIP capital outlay. For the discussions. So make a motion that we authorize city staff. Pay the thirty-five thousand dollars for the PFA administrative charge for the piece of grant. Seeing none, all those in favor, seeing if I was saying aye. Anything else, Joe, to add on wastewater project?
Not that I didn't really share, well, things that I shared with the sewer and water committee, but the contractors are both very anxious to get started. Order, anxious to order materials, um, they will be proposing some value engineering. Especially at the wastewater treatment plant to decrease costs where we can, we'll be bringing those forward to the council. Uh, there are a few other things that are in play, um, certain things are difficult to get right now. And the contractor is proposing to use some different types of materials or cast in place. Concrete rather than prefab and truck to the site because they can't get it for nine months. Types of things, so we'll work through that and bring some recommendations to the council. That's important, one of the other things on the agenda is, you know, now that we've awarded the contract, we. Like to execute a contract to provide construction services and administration through that process. I've got some extra budget that I've been kinda using to do that. Through the design phase and I, I guess I'm gonna continue to do that, my plan is to finalize that. Letter proposal and get that to the council as early as I can in December, um, for your consideration, but in the meantime, I'm gonna. Continue to kinda use the budget I have to move things forward, so we'll be having, you know, obviously, the contracts will get executed. That, those steps are kinda already in motion, but the contractors are returning the signed contracts to us and we'll have a pre-construction meeting and then. Again, the value engineering items are kinda gonna be labor, labor intensive, but there's pretty good opportunity to. Save, you know, two, three hundred thousand dollars and so we'll take those opportunities when, when they present themselves. And then, of course, dealing with all the material shortages and. Challenges that we have to face, we'll go through those two, so. Any questions for me?
So as far as the pre-construction meeting, when would you anticipate that happening? Make sure Public Works is involved, of course.
I, I guess I'll talk, have to talk with the contractor, I, you know, I would normally say next week, but next week's Thanksgiving, so I doubt it'll be next week, so what? Guess the first week in December? Or the week after Thanksgiving? I should also mention that lots of things are happening at PFA, they asked us for. A dozen submittals of varying complexity and length and they've all been submitted as of last Friday and Anita's, Anita Galantine. Loan person has been kinda systematically going through that and it appears that she has what she needs at this point from. The limited correspondence I have, but I'm sure there'll be more something, but you know, we're really close.
The other questions? Alright, thanks, Joe. Took care of those other two items, so Streets and Roads mailbox speed limit letter, we've seen your packet as a letter. Mister Dale Weems, who lives at six forty-second Avenue Southeast submitted. Kind of explaining his concerns and. We talked about it at our October meeting. Chance to talk with them, I think you mentioned you were gonna talk with Dale.
Dale and I are now best friends and. We talked a long time, um, so what I did, I shared with him. Just the things that I thought would be the goods, a good step, good steps, which would be. I sent, I communicated with all of River Park, that's at least on the River Park Facebook group about slowing down on top of that hill, introduced them all to Dale. And kinda made people aware just to slow down. So I, so that was my first step, my second step, I asked told him would that, when this got brought up again, I would request. A signage for a blind drive. And then I also just said that we were going to discuss a citywide speed limit plan. I didn't think, I didn't think that that would be appropriate for tonight, considering what else we had going on, so I didn't propose that we put it into tonight. Um, but I would like to do that eventually is to get a plan in place, um, he said that he, that there had been. There had been twenty mile an hour signs purchased and, and there's places that those would probably be really beneficial. Um, but I said, I, that I agree, but I don't wanna just be plopping them out there just because a person asks for them. Not that it's not valid, but I think there needs to be more. More discussion and more, um, more of a process in place before we do that. But I, I think, I don't know why a blind, I mean, it's kinda crazy that a blind drive has never been put there, he said he came to council years ago and they said no.
So to answer that, there was, uh, in both directions, north and south, there was a caution hidden drive. Sign before the hill. South of Sixth and just north of the concrete washout on Second, if you're familiar. Those, those signs were there caution hidden drive. And then Dale approached us earlier this year and said people are speeding. And then the, the idea started going from there, slow signs or flags or possibly twenty miles an hour, so. That's where we're at, I think maybe Dale felt that the caution hidden drive sign was getting overlooked. Or.
Are there still signs there that say caution?
No, and I don't, we don't know what happened.
Again, I live.
We, we removed them, we removed them and put up slow signs.
Cause you can't have both?
We wanna be clear with what we put up for signs, we don't wanna have two or three signs in a short area. And people are gonna pick one of them, we, we want one, that's the sign to follow, so. Just having a clear, clear signage is, is a goal.
So he thinks the, he thinks the slow signs and the flags have helped, um. I think just reaching out personally to people has also helped. I told him we have issues all over town with speeding, um, in our development alone. It's almost always the delivery trucks or people who don't live there that are doing it. Most of the time, most, most of the, most of that, okay, yes, of course, there's gonna be like people who are whatever. And Dale agreed that he said, I don't think anybody's intentionally like, I mean, no, that, he said he has actually seen people literally try to like. Take that hill as like a Dukes of Hazzard situation. But that's not the majority of people, majority of people are just, they're just on their way somewhere and they're not, you know, they're not aware, they're not intentionally like speeding over that. So, um, so that's where I thought we would start, uh, he said thinks the slow signs have helped. I totally agree that there's some places in town that need to be twenty miles an hour. I think the entire town should be twenty-five, we don't have a single speed limit inside our development, we don't have a sign inside of our development, not one. And none of it makes much sense, I feel like we need a better plan. For town, going before and before we start putting signs up, so that's my piece.
So you mentioned reaching out to people, what, what did that consist of or what do you mean?
So that's, we have like our River Park community, so that includes Timberline Drive on Facebook, Timberline Drive and then River Park. Cause it's both technically River Park, and so basically, anybody that would be driving that on a regular daily basis that lives there, of course, there's gonna be. Visitors and delivery and whatever, um, and there was good communication on there and people were like, yes, thank you for posting this, it's really important, we have to, you know. And cause there's kids walking and duck, people walking dogs, it's not just their driveway at the top, he's more. He's concerned about pedestrian traffic too that are walking there. So it's really for the good of everybody, so it was a good, he was a great guy, he's a great guy, great discussion, um. I'd love to get a plan in place for the ci- for the whole city.
Thanks for reaching out, I think too that it's, it's kinda a unique, it's a kinda a unique situation because it is a blind issue. And I think that's what helps the twenty mile an hour speeds is because it is a blind issue, you can't see from. Here to the door, what's on the side of the hill, and that happened again this morning. When I was leaving, unfortunately, I was on my side of the road and the other person coming towards me was a little bit towards the middle, but. Sometimes I wonder if we shouldn't just paint a white solid line down through the middle. As you go over the hill, just to make sure you stay on your side of the road, because people do go down the middle.
Well, and the road is incredibly narrow for the trucks that drive it, you know, those are not regular sized roads, that one. They're very narrow and so part of the thing is like, I have a new teenage driver, she's terrified of hitting a mailbox too, so she might creep in. Not, you know what I mean, so you have, there's a lot and.
And I know we have the same situation on West Center Street too. I, I guess I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of lowering the whole city, but there's certain areas. I think need it, that's one of them, I think West Center is one of them, anywhere you have that blind hill. And I got, I've gotta imagine, I know what it is like in West Center, certain times of day with that sun hitting your windshield. You're blinded as a driver, you know.
Cause every street, even flat ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I don't mean lowering it to twenty, but I meant like pedestrian, in residential areas, I feel like it should be twenty-five miles an hour. That's just how I, I think that's safer for everyone and then those spots that you're talking about. Yeah, then those would be, you know, even lower possibly. But like Rochester, I think just moved everything to twenty-five, that's residential. And I just think it's.
I think it's anywhere that's not art, not posted otherwise is twenty-five.
Oh.
Is how they.
That's how they're doing.
They have signs that you.
That's smart, yeah, that would be a smart thing to do too, so I don't know what we would need to do to kinda look into that, but.
Some of the rationale for the sign locations is, is the main connecting versus the residential streets, that's kinda where they're at right now. You go and look typically they're on West Center Drive or, but they're not on Ninth Avenue or, or Riverwood Hills has, but nothing when it goes into the residential areas. We don't put sign on every street, so that's why, I think that's why to your, you don't see them on Fifth Street or Sixth Street. But you see them on Second Avenue, which is the main.
But then, but then there's, how can you, if we don't have an ordinance or if we don't have anything saying. It's this speed limit, what's to stop FedEx from going fifty miles an hour in our development, cause that's what they do.
I mean, a lot of it's midnight.
Yeah, so I think it goes back to if we change the speed limit to twenty-five. Citywide, the perception then is, and now, uh, the sheriff, the deputy told us this, Mark Chambers. You know, the perception is that people are speeding, so now if you lower it to twenty-five, you're gonna really think people are speeding.
Yeah.
You know, if, and maybe.
That's where I'm coming from with my comments, but they're serious.
Well, we, we've talked, a good conversation, but I think we need to bring it back and on the agenda and dedicate more time to it, so. Okay. Parks and trails. Pay request number two. I make a motion, we approve pay request.
Second.
Joe, any quick comments where they're at, whether they're gonna be done?
They are nearly done, are really the work that remains is largely. Seeding mulching, uh, they've got a little bit of work with tree plantings to do and a little bit of just general grading work, so we did submit a. Punch list work or punch list for them to complete, uh, they're planning on, um, moving back in and completing the work this week, so. Hopefully by the end of this week or very early next week, they will be done with everything and we will close this project out.
On favor of the pay request, seeing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Pose. Approved. FYI, Peter Centers is a, is the, uh, general on Parks Committee, he's been secretary for several years. But he's leaving the committee, so. Just FYI, I believe, so. Public Works, we have a letter from the Presbyterian Church. Orinoco regarding the bank in front of those from, uh, the pastor. Everybody's had a chance to look at that letter. Several things are, you know, I. The right of way, uh, they have some trees on the bank. Couple areas that's growing thick with trees, I'll admit that. I'm not sure when the accident happened with the tractor, I, I've always seen Target Lily since twenty thirteen when I was here, but. So there's some, at one time they were mowing it, but I don't, they're not mowing it now, so. King, why don't you come to the podium and just, um. Last week we talked, or last month, we talked about the right of ways and clearing of trees and whose responsibility it is and.
Yes, I, I came to the council last meeting and, and asked about that, whose responsibility is it up to the pavement? I, I spoke about one property where they had a front yard that was grass all the way up to the pavement. Then they had a, a side yard that was wooded all the way up to the pavement and the consensus was. Uh, that's their responsibility to maintain. Just like they re- they're responsible for their front yard, their grass, their lush grass, but you know, their side yard is wooded. They were asking Public Works to remove these trees and, and clear the right of way and, and the consensus was is no. That's your responsibility as a homeowner, as a property owner, so when I seen this letter and I met with Lance Orinson, he's one of the members. Presbyterian Church, we discussed the trees and the hillside, the slope, everything, but it is their property, they, it's. They're supposed to maintain up to the pavement. According to our last month's discussion with right of ways, so.
So I think this comes, this is on the heels of the wall. And why, you know, because it's the same issue, it's the same slope issue, it's the same, similar grade, it's. And I think they're basically, from my understanding, cause I was, I had brought this up, but we hadn't actually gotten the letter yet. Because I had been approached by people from the church and. And I, I mean, I do agree, we did help the VFW and the gentleman next to it. With their issue that was created by. The county.
Did we have, did we dig in the dirt over there at all? With expanding.
There's no, no change in the roadway.
So really, we didn't create that, right?
Back in, back when Minnesota Avenue was expanded, did that, that's what the question is, not recently.
It's just repaved.
Right.
No, but when.
Yeah, that's my question, so when, when that changed over there or over there. Did the, the property, the church's property change, did we move any dirt as a result of widening? Minnesota Avenue.
The county did not do anything there, is, there is existing.
So really, we didn't create that issue.
We didn't create the other one either.
We did, because, well, I, yes, but they. I, I guess the point I'm getting to is. The county or, or now it's the cities. Put, put a shovel in the ground, let's say, and. Put, put a shovel in the ground, let's say, and, and move dirt there, that didn't happen at the church. So I don't, in my opinion, we didn't create that. We, we created the other one as, as a result of Minnesota Avenue. So I don't think it's fair to say here a precedent set by the previous council in front of the VFW. I don't think you can, I don't think you can compare them. That's my opinion, cause we didn't, we didn't create that. It sounds like trees are creating that. And with trees, you get erosion too. That's my.
I guess if you continue with that paragraph, the next sentence is that. The city's right away, well, it's, it's right away, but it's their, their, the property owner's responsibility per ordinance to mow up to the street. Or take care of the lawn up to the street. Now, if there's, if there's a tree that goes up over the street, we have an ordinance that allows us to go in and clear that tree for a certain height. That's, this isn't that type of case at all.
Right. I mean, we all have responsibility to. Even where I am, it's, it's super steep, I have to mow it. It's, you know, it, it's next to the road, I mow everything right to the pavement.
The other option comment they have is the. Turning from third, viewing the traffic from Minnesota Avenue coming up the hill to Third Street Southwest. Blind corner, somewhat of a blind quarter, limited visibility to the right. As you're getting ready to turn north onto Minnesota Avenue from Third Street. And the suggestion was for a convex mirror on the southeast corner to see an incoming vehicle. Uh, I think that. To me, I think that's worthy of some discussion or some evaluation. But there's a lot of details we just can't.
That whole four way area there is very dangerous, no matter which way you're coming from or which way you're turning. That.
Okay.
Yeah, it's very dangerous, it's kind of like you just go, you know what I mean, like you sneak out and then you just at one point cross your fingers and go. It is.
Well, but to address their concern, um.
Oh, it would be.
I think would require some work by Joe to look at, see.
Is a mirror.
What?
I, I don't, I feel like I've never seen a mirror used in, on a street. I like, I feel like that would be when the sun hits it, it could be so blinding and.
Joe, can you comment on that type of mirrors?
I guess I'm not, I haven't experienced that in a public right of way, that's not a solution that normally would be used. By a municipality or.
If the sun hits it.
Well, or if it's dirty or not maintained, and you're, you're, no, you're introducing. Potential liability that.
I understand the need for something, I just don't understand the mirror, but, um.
I guess my question is, do we know that it is a problem? Has there, has there been vendor benders? And I don't know, I'm just asking the question, has, have, have there been accidents right there?
County has a database of all the accidents that would have occurred on that over quite a few years, so you could ask the county to. Query the database and provide you with the output. Who would know that?
Yeah, cause maybe it's a situation, maybe it needs to be a.
Well, and then would that be, would that be a county issue then, if it's a county road?
Used to be a county road.
Oh, that's right, okay, okay. But it is a similar situation as the blind, instead of a blind up and over, it's a blank curve, you know, it's very tricky and there's. Four ways, I don't know what, I don't know what the answer to that is.
So let me ask, what, and, and I can't remember, what makes it blind, is it just? The street goes up the hill or is it trees making it blind or, you know, what, what's, what's blocking view?
Like, it's on a hill, there's also a curve, so, you know, looking, looking north, you have to kind of really look out. But looking south, you're, you're really looking out and there's just a short distance of where.
You don't have much time.
North, there's.
There's some speeding here, you can.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and like, that's a very popular route from. People to walk into town and bike into town, and so that's always been. Like, it's, it's not a great.
Even riding bicycles going up to, from the bridge up to that, you just kind of.
Yeah, you do, you just, you seriously cross your fingers and hope that you won't, yeah, hopefully nobody's speeding.
Honestly, maybe.
It's a, it's gonna be a good location for radar sign too.
It would be, it would be, but I, I, cause I, my thought too is like, I don't know if that needs to be a four way stop, but. Kind of seems like a really strange spot for a four way stop. I don't know.
But it's slowing people down before they come into town too, cause I know they do.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, to have some speed coming through, I've done it myself.
So.
Yeah.
I guess what we should do is respond back to the church and, uh.
Well, and I think you can just write with, you know, respond with the ordinance. And then that we will look into the traffic, res- what we can do to resolve.
Maybe, or maybe other issues with the, with the. And I, I know exactly what we're talking about, but I don't know what the limitations are, limitations are, is the. Where the street is coming in from Third Street on the crest of the hill, is it too far down? We probably don't want to relocate the street, so it's more on the crest of the hill. But at the same time, from where the location is of Third Street coming into Minnesota Avenue, what's the limiting factor of seeing down the hill is that? Is it the bank, is it the wall that's there now? Um, I don't know.
It's the.
There is, there could be that wall too.
No, it's not the retaining wall, cause you're already past that when you're looking.
That's, I'm just.
It's the, it's the road itself.
Well, then I think it's a matter of our.
Like when I leave the food, when I leave the food shelf, I, to go straight across down the third, I literally like inch, 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 and then go. And just press fingers.
Okay, we'll respond back to the church between the city and, and the mic. Have, um, draft a letter to respond back to the church with the ordinance and, um. Continue to monitor the, the traffic and emphasize that we plan, I think we. We'll con- consider putting a radar driver feedback sign on the hill coming up the slope from the west or from the south.
We know when we get those.
All right.
Do we know when we get those?
Maybe summer.
Yeah, there's a little bit of lead time on it.
Oh, okay. We'll be able to get them in the ground, are they, do you, are they on a, are they movable?
We'll pound a post and attach them.
Okay.
That mirror issue, you're not, I mean, you just want to tell them that you're looking to it? So the mirror.
Just remind them of the ordinance and what the responsibilities are of the property owner.
And then you're not just gonna be silent on that second issue regarding the hazardous on Third Street Southwest.
That's what we were just talking about, that we look into other options.
Yeah, so just write a sentence and letter that says the city council will consider the issue, look into options.
See if it improves with the driver feedback signs. Okay, Gold Rush, um, just a couple FYIs, uh, Carol's retired. And, uh, Joanne McDermott is the new event coordinator. And we'll be coming back, the Gold Rush meeting will be meeting December the thirteenth. That's our Gold Rush meeting night to discuss. Uh, review donation requests with our limited funds that we have. And there'll be coming to the council on the twenty first with a motion to approve those donation requests. Personnel. First item is replacing. Unity on our council. Discussions. Yes, we have basically two approaches, one is, um, appointment of a person to fill out the next. Last year term of what was originally Trish's four year term. The appointment can be. By the council or by mayor.
You have one option, you have to appoint, it says shall appoint. Visits.
Please explain, it's less than two years, so.
Right, so you have to appoint somebody to, the council has to appoint somebody to fill the seat. I think the options come into how you go about doing that.
Okay, that's a.
You shall, you can, in other words, you don't have the option to have a special election. And there, you, and the statute says you, the council shall appoint, so how, but it doesn't say anything about how you shall appoint. So the last time this happened was he filled the seat, I sent out an email that basically said what other cities have done, sometimes people just pick somebody. Um, and they just say, you know, we'll point John Smith to fill the seat, that's the end of it. Sometimes they put out advertisements for, or a solicitation for interested people, which is what you did last time when Lizzie got the seat. Sometimes they pick from the, the most recent election. And they just, you know, those are probably the three, you know, whoever didn't win the most recent election or one of the people who didn't win. So those are probably the three most common, there might be other ways, I mean, I'm not an expert at this, but. But I think those are the options, the clear options, and you could come up with something else too, I mean.
Okay.
But I don't know, I think that's, those are kind of like the common, obvious ones, ways to do it.
Just FYI, yeah, FYI, did you receive the letter from Carl Cross? It was in your emails today, should be a copy of it on your. Desktop, but is, is there to be considered? So, um. And the last time we had, uh, we had five applications, three of them interviewed. The one person just misunderstood the interview night, he thought it was on the Tuesday night, not the Monday night. The other person, I didn't reach out to find out exactly why that person did not interview.
I suppose that's another option in this case, since this is a strange one, where we've appointed somebody and then we're reappointing for the same seat. You could go back to those same five people, Lizzie was one of the five people, so the four remaining people, Carl's one of them. And then the other three, you could just ask them if they want, are still interested.
Yeah.
You know. I suppose that kind of goes along with the option of soliciting people, you could just write them.
Still there and.
Yeah.
People thoughts.
I, I like the, I like the idea of doing it similarly to the way we did it last time. Because I felt like we all got to hear. You know, everyone that was interested in why, um. And I think, I think that's a fair way of doing it, I think it's, it's nice because we can pull back in from the community and say, here's. The open seats, if you're interested, you know, this is what you need to do, um. I feel like appointing someone, um, without, without kind of having that solicitation. Time or interview time, I feel like that's a little tricky, like I don't think I would want to do that.
And I personally, well, and I've stated my opinion in the last round, I personally. Believe that we should go back to the election, you know, and I don't care if it was Carl or who it was that didn't win. Cause my, my thought is, at least it was voted by the people of the city. My opinion.
And, and I, I understand that, but I also think like for this position, that was. That was Trish and I when we were voted in, so then I feel like it, it, it's like, do you go back to the, the runner up of that election? Or do you go to the, to the.
Cause it wasn't.
Cause it wasn't this election, it was, it was three years ago, um. You know what I mean, I think there, it's, there's so many layers to that, you could.
I, I know what you mean, but the reason, reason I'm saying that, that election is because we had council seats open. And it, you know, you know what I'm saying, cause we weren't, when we have two council seats open and we weren't saying, well. You know, I'm running for that specific one and you're running for that specific one, we had people running for council positions. That's why I say the election.
Right, which we did the year that I got on also, I mean, I took someone's spot, and Trish. Kept her spot, but my next door neighbor who also ran lost by three votes. I mean, maybe five votes, it, it, there, you know what I mean, so I feel like there's this kind of. There are people that, that lost. In all of the years.
But did they run the next election? You know, that, that's why I'm saying the, the most recent election. Cause those were the people that ran. That's my thought.
Well, and that might too, I mean, there is a person that ran. Even though it was for the mayor, because it was, is one of our council members too. And we could approach that person as well. If they're interested, really, I don't know. But they also. I think that person was one of the five that. I'm also looking for, uh, to be interviewed too, but didn't come to the interview for whatever reason. Wasn't it Sandy?
Sandra, oh, out cult, out count.
Yeah, she put a application in, but for whatever reason didn't interview, so.
I don't, I guess. I don't know why we'd change the process now. I, I don't know why we, few months, you know, ago, we did it one way and why would we do it differently this time? I think consistency is important, um. We, we know what not to do this time. It would probably be. We've learned.
That's why I was saying go back, go back to the ballots, cause then it, it really isn't the council deciding. It's the ballots deciding.
Which I. I get, but I also think. The co- they did decide and they didn't pick those, those people that didn't, that didn't win, like, they didn't win.
Right.
So why give them a, a higher chance of this? And the other piece of the puzzle with Carl, and I appreciate that he is so insistent on continuing to get back on. Um. There, this is a completely different time and there have been a lot of things that have transpired. Over the last year, and is this the right, is this the right time for him? To, for, for the council, for, for him to be on it again, I mean, I don't know, I. I would have a hard time personally appointing someone who is, has had such a, a. There's just been a lot of issues, and I think that makes me nervous bringing someone on that's had that many issues with the city. Between. Elections.
And I don't know what we can speak to, Mike. I mean legally, I don't know what legally we can speak to during a meeting, but I agree with Lori and.
You mean speak to, I don't understand.
Speak to about this person who's gave us a letter. We can't.
From Carl's letter?
So, I mean, I agree with Lori, there's a lot that's happened between that, that decision, our decision and now. That would.
Well, that's, that's before we, before we further.
I wouldn't get into it tonight, I mean.
No, I'm not going to, but I'm just saying that that, there is le- there is legal reasons, there's, that I would feel also, I would feel also.
I wouldn't say, I'm not giving any opinion that there's legal reason you can't appoint Carl. And that's not my opinion, I think. I, I don't know enough about that situation, so it's not, I, I don't know enough to say that you can't discuss it. Or what you shouldn't, probably can discuss it, I, I don't know what you shouldn't discuss. But I think that's beyond the scope of tonight, unless you're gonna make a motion to appoint Carl.
Well, I'll make a motion that we use the same process of interviewing.
Yours.
Applicants, so the council can appoint somebody out of the interview process.
Yeah, I think you can appoint anybody that meets the basic requirements, they have to be eighteen years old, have to be an American citizen, they have to reside in the city of Ornoco.
Right, we know all this, but what, what we, she was saying is that there's, there's hesitation.
Right.
Oh, your second to my motion.
Yes, second.
Thank you. Either comments or.
I was just agreeing with you.
Provide a, a timeframe, I think we had to ten working days.
Okay. Well, let's all make.
Now, we are gonna be really firm on this. City clerk is gonna speak up here because the last time it was a disaster. And I got attacked and I had nothing to do with it. And I got attacked and I had nothing to do with it. So now I'm going to be vocal. So you want ten working days? Like from tomorrow or like starting next week, two full weeks?
Well, next week's weird because it's Thanksgiving.
I know.
Why don't we make it, as a suggestion? Open it Monday after Thanksgiving.
The twenty ninth?
Twenty nine.
Wait, 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 wait.
But the next.
Why would we open it?
Days.
Why would we open it?
So if we open it on.
It was there.
What are you looking at?
Just pull them on your phones.
So if we. So if we opened up on November the twenty ninth and run it till. December the seventh, tenth. Ten business days. And we would, uh. Uh, review, have the interview. We can do it like we did last time. With their other committee meetings, we'd interview on the twentieth, which is that Monday night. Before the Tuesday night. December twenty first, that's where we would appoint that person.
We need a cutoff time. On the tenth.
Noon.
Okay, now we're gonna repeat, you're gonna repeat all that, Rylan. I'm sorry.
Don't you close at eleven?
Yes, eleven, correct, Mike, thank you.
Okay, so you're.
There's nobody here to get it. You won't stamp it in.
Riley, you're proposing that we open the application process?
You accept interviews.
Nope.
No, except application, that's right.
Why, I guess, I don't know why we'd beat, why wouldn't we just do it right away?
That's a long wait.
That's a long wait?
That is a long wait. Doing it. Not starting it till the twenty ninth, like Rylan's asking. That's basically idle for ten days.
That's what I mean. Why would we, I don't wanna do that. Why wouldn't we just open it tomorrow? But then because of the holiday extended.
I'm gone till the twenty second. I don't need to be here to do it, but.
No, and we also do have to form an application and stuff, so it's probably not gonna be able to be open tomorrow. Do you know what I mean? And then Renee is out, but maybe we could open it.
The twenty second.
Yeah, let's open it Monday the twenty second. What do you think of that, Rick?
I won't be back, so.
You don't have to be here. It just, I don't.
Maybe me and Dana can work on questions.
Well, it'd be the same. I think use the same exact format that we, that you did. But use the same form, just make sure the date is what we say and not change.
So, opening the application, you have to re-say your motion, I'm sorry.
Open it on the twenty second.
Okay.
It's gonna be posted on the city website and Facebook page.
On Monday, November twenty second. What time, Rylan, are you opening it?
Let's say noon on the twenty second.
And closing notes?
We'll close on Tuesday, December the seventh. That's ten working days. Take out two for Thanksgiving.
No, what did you just say? I'm sorry, opening on the twenty second.
It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Why don't you just go through?
Closes at five, four o'clock on December seventh.
That's more than ten.
That's more than ten.
Yeah. Sorry, it's, you're looking at it funny. Look at five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, closing on December third.
We said ten businesses, so take out Thanksgiving.
But why, so what's the, what's the hang up on ten?
That's the rule.
Why don't you just?
Only ten?
Why don't you just pick a date? And say this date at this time.
Yeah, just give me.
If it's a lot of days, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. Why are we saying ten days? I think it has to be, so.
Nothing's required.
Ten, how about through the whole week? Do the whole week of the tenth, then December tenth.
Okay, so December twenty. November twenty second through Friday the twenty sixth? Or no, okay, just give a date. What do you wanna do? To the tenth, Lori wants to do till the tenth. Does everyone agree with that?
I, I don't know where we're starting. So we're starting November twenty second and we're going to say we're done.
You realize Lori, there's three full weeks. Okay, okay.
Where are we waiting so?
Because it's the holiday week?
Oh, it's not.
There's a whole week in between.
Right, the twenty second is Thanksgiving week. Why not open it on the? Twentieth. Let it be open for that entire week.
We don't have office staff. We have one person that was sick. And Jerelyn here by herself and she needs to get this put together, so that we're giving her.
Okay, why not do it then, the week of the twenty seventh?
Are, I don't know what.
We have to be on a Monday. I think you're on the wrong month.
You're not choosing, you're not choosing weekdays.
That's okay, Jim, that was funny.
Let me, let me change this here.
So. The twenty second to the tenth, if we do it like that, Lori's doing three full weeks. Does everybody like that or does everybody want two weeks?
I think three because of the holiday week again, because it's, so many people are busy that week and not.
Well, yeah, Thanksgiving's just kind of a crap shoot week, you know what I mean? Especially for Naez out now for some time.
Right. And so, and this year, everybody has the twenty sixth off, you know, so many places are giving the twenty sixth off too. And so I just think.
So do you like the December tenth, Dana?
I like the twenty second to the tenth. That makes sense to me.
Hey, do you like it?
Yeah, that's mine.
Jim?
I think it's too long.
Okay, Lizzy, I mean, will you kind of, let's see, I don't know if you.
Why not the twenty ninth to the tenth? That's.
Are you back on a Saturday?
Two weeks. Ten days.
So what's your, why do you think it's too long to get the word out? What's your, what's your hesitancy about getting the word out for longer?
Cause I, I think we should get it done as.
Well, we're not gonna have a meeting before that.
Yeah, we're not gonna vote on this until the twenty second.
We had a meeting to have the application, to hear the applicants, and then we voted on it during our regular city council meeting.
So it'll be like the twentieth, we have the, the special meeting to hear the applicants interview. And then the twenty first, we have a regular council meeting and vote. So no matter what, we're not bringing them on before then. And there, there's no reason that we would want. Personally, just because we have more options to bring people in. I mean, it's a, it's a job, so let's see how many.
And I, I, with Thanksgiving and then with Renee being out, who knows how long?
She is gonna be out, I just don't know.
Okay, so.
Yeah, you might not wanna get so cozy.
Yeah, back up, get your mask on. So yeah, especially in light of that, especially that I think that that's.
Cause I have a really, do have a full player these couple of weeks.
Of course, and it's the holidays.
I'm doing annual payrolls. I got firemen. I gotta get all them out by Tuesday. And then we got water bills.
Okay, did you say Friday at eleven, eleven AM?
Um, no, you guys said Monday, the twenty second at noon.
And then December the tenth at eleven.
Friday, December tenth, you said at eleven? Yes, I know, I'm sorry, just wanna really be loud on this. So Mayor Rylan request moves to open the application on Monday, November twenty second, two thousand twenty one at noon. Closing on Friday, December tenth at eleven o'clock AM. I need a second.
Second.
Hallelujah. Do we, now what do we need?
Any other comments? They have a timeframe.
I decline. Sorry, I decline.
I know, I'm joking.
I decline any and all. Anything.
Alls in favor, signify everything, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next time is the Fiber Arts Run Agreement. Paragraph explaining, this is a, the Fiber Art Guild has been meeting. For many years, um, for a flat rate of thirty dollars a month. From the previous. Staff that, uh, I'm not sure how long it's been going on, but anyway, a group of ladies that meet, uh, retired. Five times a month. One to two hours. And the city staff is. Asking if we should consider increasing the rate or changing or leaving. Right now. And they approached me here about a month or so, two, in the summer sometime. Wanted to keep it basically thirty dollars a month. Ladies, low income. They appreciate the thirty dollars a month. And, uh. So city staff wanted to bring it to council's attention. We also have drawn a formal agreement up, which is great. I appreciate the time that Renee and. Jerelyn took in the making this happen. I think it's a good idea. I'm sure they appreciate it too. If they would struggle to be meeting a hundred dollars a month for a meeting. Or for any of their meetings. Let alone two hundred dollars a month, so. If you wanna consider a modest increase from thirty to fifty dollars a month, I think that would be fine, but. To do more than that would be. I'll say it's a hardship, I think, would be, they would appreciate keeping it as low as we can, but. I know we need to cover our staff or cleaning, public works for cleaning and everything, but, um. I know they do appreciate the, the committee. Time that they have, or probably one or more. Bigger users of it because of the meetings that they do have, so. What, what are?
So, so they are, yeah, they do crafts, they do weaving, knitting, uh, sometimes they play music. It can get a little bit disruptive. I'm not gonna lie, cause we're down there trying to work. Um, they do activities outside, they're outside of our windows. They just, when they come, they're kind of all over. And it turns into almost like a mini concert. They're very nice. Um, but they went from using it once a month to three times a month to now sometimes twice a week. And we just feel like. The, the parades need to go up. It's a large group of women. They're artists and pianists and all types. I don't. Think that they cannot not afford it.
Well, do you need to put stipulations that they can't be outside your window?
Well, the one day I told them, I said, we're doing some training. You, you know, we had the windows open in the fall and can you not, you know? They're very nice, but it's just turned into, um, like a regular thing. And like Renee said. They're getting by awful cheap. So we just thought like, maybe the council should maybe know about this. I think they can afford more.
What about limiting their monthly use? If it's that, if it's more than once a week now?
Oh yeah, it's been once and twice a week steady.
So maybe it needs to be.
Limit the number of times.
Yeah.
Yeah, and now they've broken off, so there's like the Fiber Arts Guild. Now there's a few mini groups that broke off and then call themselves. The same, but the one lady told me they're not. So just so you know, it's. Kind of accelerating off of that into other mini groups and they're using that.
I, I feel like we should be charging them the same rate as we charge everyone else. I feel like it's being taken advantage of. Especially if it went from once a month for thirty dollars to multiple times a week.
It, it also does make a lot more work for either Kane or I, you know, like sometimes I come down and clean the tables and clean. Sometimes Kane does. I mean, there's a lot more work to pick up to do the next day in here and to set up. And it's just turning into like a second job.
Do we look at, at what Kane's hourly rate is, or one of Kane's employees and. Kane says it takes half hour to clean it up or an hour. There's a cleaning fee.
But I guess we came up with this rental agreement.
Right, that's.
For a reason.
Right. I'm trying to find it. It's not, it was it in the extra one that you sent? The agreement is. The agreement is, but not our normal.
I, Dana, or, I'm sorry, Dana. And they put them together. I'm not sure.
I feel like it was. Another thing that came out. You know what I mean?
If this one does say the renter must clean up.
That doesn't always happen, does it, Ken?
They pick up.
It's always one of us.
And since current rate is a hundred dollars.
Yeah, and you can podium and. Yeah, just comment on how often you have to clean up that.
So, maybe, maybe I'm not out of place here, but like, you know, the Lions is renting the, the hall here for Meet Santa Day. I don't know if the Lions vote.
Meet Santa?
Meet Santa. Like Santa Claus, the red guy.
No, I heard this is like meets as in like go down to the butcher.
Gonna butcher Santa.
So I guess I would just think about what we're charging that service organization for.
Yeah.
Use of the hall. What's that? John was here the other day, he said.
A hundred dollars.
So we're charging them a hundred dollars, a service club.
Right.
Giving back to the community.
Yeah.
This Arts Guild, they're just.
Do they give back to the community on anything?
No. Yeah, I just, like I said, they're really nice ladies. They come in. But I'm not getting the vibe that Rylan got, that they're hard up by any means. They all have.
There's a legal issue with it too. You can't donate your city resources and just give it away.
Well, and then, and then what's happening is other people called to book it and they've got the space taken. When we could be making revenue. Do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I think we do have to be consistent with what.
To our agreement.
Where, where is that? I know we have it.
I mean, I.
You guys just discussed it at one of the last.
I know, I know, I'm sorry, I don't.
It's not in the sphere.
I think it's a hundred.
So I think, okay, so there we go. It's twenty five dollars for this room for two hours or less.
Correct.
So it'd pay twenty five dollars every time you wanna come. That's, that's what it is.
Yeah, otherwise.
And that's not, because.
And they're here way longer than two hours, aren't they, Ken? Some days it's like from, they'll start coming at nine, ten, bringing weaves and instruments.
Well, and.
And they leave a four.
Well, and that's great, then the hundred dollar trip rate, a charge.
And that's what Renee and I are, we're struggling with, but we feel bad. They're very nice, but it's like.
Well, and you know.
I'm nice too.
I am too, nobody gives me nothing.
And nobody is saying that they're not, and nobody doesn't, you know, we want them to rent it, but it's, we have. We have this.
Right.
In place.
Right.
For everybody.
But like I said, Renee and I do not know who, but we were told. That to charge them thirty a month for unlimited use and that just little radars went off in our head like, why is that happening?
Yeah, no, it needs to be the same for everybody.
I mean, cause the firemen, the legion, everybody else would have to pay, you know what I mean?
Right, cause the next group that comes in. If they find out about it, they'll expect us to give them a break.
And I agree with Mike is saying, if we have this, if, if, this is what is in our, this is what the council has decided. We can't pick and choose people.
It's not about that, it's about, you know, technically the, the.
Revenue.
You can't rent it for less than the market rate. Now, cities, to anybody. I mean, it's a bad policy to give one group one thing, another group another thing. But cities do bad policy, you could do that. The, the legal part of it is, you know, you can't rent, let's say you had a nonprofit group that wanted to rent one of your offices. Upstairs. And you say, well, we're gonna give it to you guys for fifty dollars a month. They might be the only ones renting. You might have nobody else that rents a permanent office in any city building. The question is, is that fifty dollars the going rate for that type of space? Like, that might be three hundred dollars and not just fifty dollars a month, or, so the question, so the way to handle this is a rate schedule. If it's a temporary, it's not a permanent.
Which we have.
We have.
We have.
Oh, you have it.
That's what I'm saying, we need to follow the schedule. We need, we need to charge them what we're charging everyone else.
We don't know who.
Then it's a done deal, that's, that's.
Right, and so, so just.
It ended.
Yeah.
Like immediate, but we need a motion, don't we?
I don't, I. To follow the, our own rate schedule?
I think you wanna send them a letter and just say.
Yeah.
You know, you've already paid for this month, starting December first.
December.
Yeah. Right.
Whatever.
Okay.
Are you okay?
No. We're gonna have fifty ladies out there just. Walking in with their walkers and say, we can't afford it, we can't afford it.
Twenty five dollars.
The committee, it'll probably dissolve. And the group won't have your other place to go. I'm just saying.
But we can't, we can't.
I understand, I understand that the fees, but.
Yeah.
I understand also that.
Suppose you could reduce.
That's what the council decides, that's good.
You could reduce the fee for everybody else too, and just give everybody thirty dollars unlimited use.
But the, and I, and I would say the problem is, to me. That this seems to be. But the, and I, and I would say the problem is, to me, that this seems to be. I don't want to say taking advantage of, but it a little bit.
It is really.
It a little bit, right?
They went from, what, one or two, to how many, and they went from an hour or so to.
And one group.
Four hours?
Oh, they've been here longer than that.
And one group, now it's multiplied to two groups or three groups.
Well, and then we've had a little bit of an issue, we close at four.
Yeah.
So sometimes if they come at one or two.
Yes.
We want to go home, we've worked a long day, and they're still in here with five hundred instruments and paints.
Yeah, and actually, I've had to field phone calls.
Right.
Are we gonna make a motion?
From that too.
I don't think we have to make a motion.
Can I just say something else to, to this point? I think when city hall is closed, I don't know how do we feel about this, as staff, and when city hall is closed, it should be closed. Do we allow people to stay here after?
History Center stays open.
Well, there's people with pass codes that can come in twenty-four hours a day.
Okay.
But they can't get in our.
But if they don't have pass codes, like if, if they have.
No.
No, Sean, Sean and Tracy was here working on signs not long ago, and Fiber Arts Guild, and I walked on and told them, you know, we're closing at four.
Yes.
Sean and Tracy was excellent, polite, they were out the door. Fiber Arts Guild, I've stood here forty-five minutes waiting for him to clean up.
Yeah, no.
And then I got kids waiting at home, right?
Right, and then that's overtime.
Yes, well, yeah.
Well, and so that, that has to, these things have to be addressed, like maybe we form a letter saying that, you know, we are, we are going to follow our current policy. And our fee schedule, and you need to respect that we open and close at these times. And you may not stay longer. And our staff leaves happily, and that is what we expect. Any renters to do also. I don't know why that, I, I, that to me is kind of. That's upsetting that people are not doing that, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
They're very nice, they just.
I agree, I know, I know some of them, I, I know, they're wonderfully, they're wonderful people. It's just that. I think when we open end things like this, that's what happens. Um.
I understand.
And I think that, yeah, let's, I don't know if we need to make a motion.
No, because it's following our policy.
We just need to follow, send them a letter stating that we will follow our policy.
No, it's just a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the neighborhood authorization for. Signatory.
I second.
Comments? Favors, signify the saying, I?
Hi.
I. Prove. FCOM is a FYI with the rate increase. Getting different one.
I know. It's just an FYI, I guess.
We missed the signatory authorization? No, okay.
We've got that paperwork started. It's just showing you guys, is all.
Yeah.
Yep.
Next one, approve city council payroll, as I can mostly approve the city council payroll.
I hope so, you guys.
Not mine. For December, it'll just go next year.
No, your guys' December is on there, if you said you were coming.
Yeah, there's nothing in there.
Oh, she put it on there, she said, we can look at it later. Yeah, you call, yeah. She said she updated it, so I will check on that, and you check your notes.
All favors, signify the saying, I? I, post, approve. Colonial Life staff left at. Reduced rates, savings.
No, this is like Aflac, it would replace Aflac in our short-term disability. It's significantly cheaper with all the same coverage, and we have talked about it at personal last month. Lori had said she knows many people that have had it and love it, so they said bring it to the council. We basically just. Hope you guys will approve it, it'll save us money and the city.
So this is just short term?
Um, no, short term, and then like Kane and some of us have like our own cancer policy, or.
Oh, yeah.
If you had a heart attack, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Just, so we pay for those, the city just does the short term.
Okay.
Yep.
Might make a motion, we accept you, Colonial Life quotes. This is Aflac protective.
It's, yeah, he was gonna let us know the, their billing cycle, it'll be December or January, yep.
Comments? If not, all those favors, signify the saying, I?
I.
I. Next item is new desks, wall for city hall, there's a packet.
Yeah, we, um, checked with three local ones and then several online ones. The three locals were Beckley, Schmidt Goodman, and is it Office Max or Office Depot, I'll do it by the fairgrounds, I can't remember, Office Max. Anyways, basically, everybody we talked to, it was anywhere from six months to eighteen months for delivery. Just to get it, and you know, now keep in mind, we have a new part-time person coming on, we cannot advance with that until we have this situated. So there's like the coal fit supply thing, and then the prices, let's just say, I was in shock. I was thinking, oh, that's two thousand, you know. I had no clue. They all were twenty and twenty-five sold. In the end, Schmidt Goodman came in with the best price, they were local. And they can have the desks and everything set up in eight, nine weeks. And that's around the timeframe that we would be close to bringing someone on, or at least interviewing. So we need to free up our desks for the seated person. Seated person will take one of the older desks and administrative assistant will take the next. And then the new desk will go in there, and one of the main reasons also, getting a little more privacy, um, these desks have soundproof panels. There's a little bit more privacy to handle confidential information. I only have one cabinet that locks, I'm out of room, and there's so many things, like I hold. Everybody's social security numbers and pertinent information that needs to be locked, and not everybody should be. You know what I mean? And right now it is just wide open. There's not enough security at all here. So it would be doubling our storage, and everything locks but one cabinet, which is the coat closet. We can have them in nine weeks, but it's not cheap, and I understand that. But I think it is needed.
Is this currently in our budget? It says budget money as well, that, would that cover it?
Depends on what you're doing with, like, we gotta talk.
So, that's a good question. What we have right now is that we got a couple things that are, we have a community center, community center. An R M, which kind of covers maintenance and repair equipment here at the community center. And right now, we have, as of October twenty-fifth, and I don't think we've spent anything since, we have twenty-six thousand dollars left of our, this year's budget. Of that twenty-six thousand, we also approved a boiler installation back in July, and Kane, you ought to comment. On what you know about when that might or might not happen.
Oh, the boilers, we're hoping to get installed this year, twenty-twenty-one, that's fourteen thousand and change, so. Whatever is left, I think it was twenty-seven thousand.
Seven, twenty-six, so it would be over budget with the approved boiler, and if we chose to do this for the seventeen, we'd be slightly over budget.
Right. So hopefully, we're gonna get them installed here twenty-twenty-one, but it could possibly be after the first. Just because of our contractor, their schedule, they're having a tough time getting product and.
We all heard it. I believe we have, in the community center, same line, in twenty-twenty-two, we have fifteen thousand, and so that would cover the boiler. Kane mentioned in the first, now that we also want to do some new electrical routing.
I think that'd be the time to, to add some circuits to the office. Right now, there's, there's only two circuits in there, so. That'd be the time to get some conduit ran into the grid, the, above the ceiling, and get some new circuits dropped down for these new desks. In the right locations.
To avoid so many power strips.
Yeah, we don't got extension cords running all over.
So, do you know if they take, they need payment in full before you order, is there a deposit? And then, because we're looking at, I mean, January before we're gonna get anything.
Right.
At the end of January.
I can ask them, I'm sure, for sure deposit, I'm sure you would have to, just to commit, and then I'm sure pay off what it said. And that would be January.
Because I, what I'm thinking is what, we would be fine then on our budget. Because we're gonna be in January, and even, even if it was half down.
Well, and even if we had to do a little CIP until, you know, or.
It's where, I mean, we're at three thousand.
It's almost December one.
So it's kind of, I feel like we're so late in the, in the year, and yet, and everything's gonna roll over.
Just caught my attention wasn't, in number one, if you look at the second page, it puts the desks in the same. I don't see it already where it's at right now. But I don't see a wall enough to hold them.
I think that's just the current layout.
Was that just to show?
Existing, it says, yeah, it's, um, it's a petitioned half-wall with noise panels. Like, there will still be a little light noise, but nothing like now.
Yeah, and the picture shows a short.
Yep.
Short length.
And she actually said, let me show you this, because I don't know how to see those like slots, they can make that solid. To even take away more noise. That's just an option that it's slotted, you don't have to get it that way, it's solid.
Also, there, this, this, so this wouldn't be a full wall, it would be.
No, a full wall would probably be like fifty thousand. Yeah, so, don't ask for a full wall.
Yeah, that's what I was picturing, that's in my head.
Trying to, our main thing is like, when I'm doing financials or on a phone call, and then she's over there type of minutes, or she's. On the phone with Ryland, or, you know, it's just, there's no. It's very hard to concentrate.
I got it, okay.
Do they have company stuff for Mayo Clinic with all the offices that closing?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Well.
And there's just a lot more storage, if you look to the right in that little bottom picture, all of those cabinets lock, I only have one, two little drawers that lock, and I'm completely out of space. And I carry checks and socials and.
Yeah, I think it's necessary, and I think we should go ahead and.
So, how much over budget would this put us?
Right now would be, if we do the boiler today for this year, and this would be. Between four and five thousand dollars over budget. For the whole community center department is, I'm sure it's acceptable, because there's a lot of things we haven't used money for.
Until Lori's point, you know, if we're not getting it till after the first of the year, could we do a deposit on it and then?
And I'll email and ask that in the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, I'm sure, yeah, usually that is how it is.
Yeah.
So does the city?
Joe, do you have any comments from your standpoint? Anything? I made a motion that we approve the. Option number two. For the seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Thank you.
Or number, number.
Number one.
Number one, Ryland.
No, it's number one, I'm sorry, I was looking up the two, yes. With the privacy.
Yep.
A second?
I second it for three.
Other comments? We'll follow up on what we do for deposit and the time. Through all those in favor, signify the saying, I?
I.
I oppose. We're gonna do one more item, and then we're just, I'd like to table the new business until December. That's okay. Okay, so next item is our petitions, planning services. In your, I got, we, at our former meeting, we asked Seda to respond with a proposal. They essentially listed the six points that was in the stand deck letter. With some. Minor differences, but the labor rate was eighty-nine dollars per hour. Stand tech was, there's two rates, one for the planner that. I think the comment was, I would probably do the majority, they worked a hundred and nineteen, and the senior planner, when needed, was one sixty-eight. So, I know we. Yes. City staff, Renee asked, we asked, look at who uses Seda. And I, I guess it was. Response, like a back for Renee, whether cities either use Seda or stand tech or their engineering services for planning. That's all.
Yeah, she said, there was a little bit of both, kind of back and forth, but she said, some of the ones that had Seda were happy with it. You know, and then she said there were some towns that didn't even have their city engineer, they had a different engineering firm altogether. So there was a little bit of everything. That's what she found when she called.
Oh, I, I appreciate Seda responding, I was. Surprised by how they responded and saying, well, we'll just put down the six items that was in the stand deck letter and our proposal too, so I don't know what they do different or what they. Thought that was strange. I do think there's some advantages with our current stand tech engineering and planning working together. And. I think that if we were to choose Seda, yes, it's a lower rate, but at the same time. Any type of interaction with our city engineer is gonna raise our city, raise our stand tech. Uh, general masters of services agreement and their responses to the funds. So I'm not sure, it could be a rush, or it could be more expensive to go with Seda too, in the whole scheme of things of responding.
What do you mean by that?
Alright.
What do you mean by that?
Um, okay. The interaction of Seda. Them taking on this, or something, that there's issues, if they have to contact our city engineer and handle those responses or. The responses, I guess, are what they would need to do, is to supply Seda back. There'd be some, I could see charges from the master services from static to respond to Seda. At the same time.
Let me ask you a question on that, and maybe this is a better question for Joe. Um, let's say that we go with stand tech, and stand tech's engineers or planners have questions and they need to talk to you. Wouldn't you charge us also? I mean, does it matter?
Have to be some interaction there, there just is, you know, and then, you know, there are certain. You know, GIS mapping and doing different things, we have access to that. Seda maybe not, wouldn't, wouldn't have access or doesn't have the technical abilities or software systems that we do, so we would have to probably. Do that work for them, or they couldn't produce it, or you would go without, I guess, one of the two.
Would they have access to the county GIs?
They do, just like the public does, you know, but you can't use their system. Just that, yeah.
I guess my, my question is, let's say that they had to talk to you specifically. With, if it was a stand tech planner and they had a question for our city engineer, would you then charge the city? Because it's your time.
Sure, I mean, if we're working on the project, we.
So I mean, so I think that's where I'm coming, like, it's apples to apples, like, whether they call Joe or. The planners call Joe, we're still gonna get that charge.
Right.
Because you are, your time is valuable and you have to.
Sure.
Charge for it.
I think it is an upright comparison.
There isn't anything about, you know, experience and qualifications and, and that matters. There isn't anything about, you know, experience and qualifications, and, and that matters, you know, the bottom line, experience matters and. There's efficiencies just built into that too.
So if we, if we, if we look at. Plantex planners versus Sita planner, just from a qualification standpoint, now I don't know what Sita has. That, like, you can speak, your background is, we can ask Sita, be at, at, to compare. Because I think it's important too that we make sure we have the best use, or the best qualified people to do it too.
Did we invite them here?
Sure, we can invite Sita.
Well, right, I think.
Or, or at least have them respond back to our questions about.
Right.
Our city and their planners, what's their background education or whatever.
I think that's really important, so we, we have access to Joe all the time, so we can ask him questions anytime. But I think we all need to also have access to be able to ask Chris Keason, or whoever would come. But I think they, maybe we should invite them to discuss it in person.
I guess my question would be, at the end of the day, are we getting the same thing? Yeah, sure. Whether it's from Sita or from Joel. Are we getting the same outcome?
Right.
You know. I know there's something to be said about experience, but I think. I, I personally, and not, nothing against Joe or SandTech. I personally like the idea of diversifying what we're doing, you know? And I know Sam Tech was, and Joe, the water and sewer project. I, I personally like, there could be a little more diversity.
I wish we'd known what we'd asked for here originally, because the message was cut off. But, you know, based on Sita's response, they're not giving us any indication that they have a very intimate understanding of the services that we're looking for from a planning perspective. Second, you know, we want them to be focused on the work that we already asked them to do. We want them to be focused on community development, and keeping the work with StanTech. But from a planning perspective, we gain a lot of efficiencies and we benefit from their expertise. And I don't know why I wouldn't go with a engineering and advisory firm that has the expertise.
Now, I, I'm gonna agree with you, Lizzie, I think StanTech for Sita brings a lot of. Good, great experience, when we look at our economic development and the EDA, and I think it's a perfect fit. I think from a council responsibility of being financially respective or responsible for funds and how we operate efficiency, I think the efficiency factor of our city, of planning, and following the guidelines and things that we're asking for, and the six points from StanTech is, would complement our engineering. Sita may complement that, but I don't, I'd like to hear more about their experience and, and qualifications to be planner, planning. We can table this to December and ask Sita to come to our meeting, or reply in a contract, it's like.
And what I would ask too is to talk with some of Sita's clients, that they've done this for. You know, the, the professional planning, because really, SandTech offering this, it's, it's a new service to us, right?
We use them for our future land use map from the P and Z committee, a couple years ago, it provided all that information.
But I mean, in terms of contract, so now they're, it's coming with a contract, you know, for professional services. And Sita is too, well, is Sita a contract, or is it a new contract? Okay.
I'm assuming it would be that.
Because I'm, I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, number one, I, I would, I would want to hear from some of their customers to understand, how deep do they go? You know, because that would tell us right away, do we even go down this path? I, I think it's worth a look.
And who, who would you get? That's the other question.
Right, well.
We've got some, a good idea of the fact that we get a senior planner and a planner, and what their hourly rates are. This just gives us an hourly rate without an idea of the expertise or the individuals that were involved.
And then, and that's, that's the question. If we talk with some of their customers around some of these things, to say, you know, what have you? They should give us customers who have used these services, you know, equal services, if that's what they're offering. Because what I'm seeing here is, is, you know, based on, you know, six points. They're, they're offering six things, so we should say, okay, who are, who are customers that are, you're offering?
Basically, get reviews from other.
Exactly, get references.
And then ask Sita to come to next month's meeting, correct?
Well, I think, like he said, he'd be happy to answer questions or discuss, so this was just a quick, like.
Right.
A shootback email thing, yeah, we offer that, you know, so I think we have to give them a chance to give us more information. Like I said, we have lots of information and, and know what SandTech can provide based on what we've, what they've done in the past. I tend to agree with you, Jim, that. I get nervous putting all of our, everything into one place, I, I do think that that. It creates questions within the community, and I, and I know that because I've answered, had to field those questions. And that's before we've hired them as a planning and planning, planning company, so I just. I need, I think I'd like to get more information from Sita before we make any decision.
I think there's efficiencies by being, having everything under the, it's not a new contract with StanTech. It all falls into a master services agreement, so that's not changing. It would be a new contract and with Sita. So, I mean, that's, we're also looking at efficiencies and how the city operates, and having everything under StanTech is. To me, in my mind, is the more efficient operation.
Right, we talked about how these services are things that we're gonna have to advocate to, you know, I mean, have to use, right? We're gonna have to ask for this assistance and ask for this help, and it's largely gonna be planning and zoning that's gonna have to ask for assistance from these parties. And given that we are an operationally lean, you know, city administration. You know, simplifying, you know, we have to think about how we'd simplify it, and where we would be able to gain efficiencies. And I think there's a time and a place to diversify, and, you know, I mean, but. This seems like not one of them.
Well, any other thing I, I'm, I look at too is, okay, we, we have two bids. And at face value, they're, they're the same product. And as a council, every other time, we've gone with the lowest bid. Here we're going with a higher bid. You know, so I, I just think we should do our due diligence to take a good look. We already know the quality that SandTech offers and what they do. I think we owe it a look at Sita to see what they do. Talk to some of their customers, that they offer these same services too. And, and, you know, and not just one, I would say, a good handful. Do you get what you want, do you get the response, you know? What, what's, what's their, what's your level of skill, what's your skill level in certification within your group?
We'll have city staff, a couple things, they can contact Sita, ask for qualifications of their planners. And we can also either ask them for the cities that they're currently providing the service for. Or we can contact cities in the area. And whose services are used. Now, the Paul, what we asked in October, I guess we're asking more details now.
I would be interested in, you know, response time, response time, you know, certification, things like that. And did they deliver?
I make a motion, we table this to December, and come back on the December agenda with some background information from.
And can I make a friendly amendment? Can we invite Sita to?
And invite Sita to the December meeting.
Second. And to meet Santa. That's so awful.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Root.
Before we go to unfinished business, we do have a dog bite that I think we should address.
We do, um, so, there's no. Part of the incident, there's no citation given for a city to act on.
Well, are you talking about?
This is a, I think you're talking about.
I think he's thinking of the other one.
There's a dog bite, actual dog bite, and the sheriff, and a sheriff's report in our packet.
You're thinking of the dog.
I was in a different mind, this is worse view.
Yep, just a different one.
I would like. To, for somebody to follow up on whether the dog was actually euthanized, because it said there's an appointment to make, I mean, on Wednesday, ten thirteenth, to euthanize the dog. I think it needs to be followed up.
So I know a lot about, so.
Okay.
Yes, that's exactly what I was gonna say, I read the report as we were sitting here, and I, the reports say, the owner of the dog indicated he was going to get the dog, who was not a nine-year-old Rottweiler mix euthanized. So that happens a lot, when people say that, and then they don't, you know, they don't follow through. So, because there was a fight here, if you read this, so the other thing is, this is awkward. So I, I'm not going to make a determination here if this dog is a dangerous dog. See, that's a fact finding, and not a lawyer thing, like, I can point you to the statutes that, that define, and there's a definition in chapter three forty seven, we pulled it up here. You know, you guys can go read that, or we can print it and put it in the packet, and you can read the law. But this, the city has obligations, this is the problem not having a police department. So when you don't have a police department, you have statutory obligations regarding this issue that you have to, your, your quote, animal control authority has to fulfill. And then, in the reports from the sheriff department, it indicated the city council was to do that, I think the reason they did that is you don't have any animal control authority. So, and that's probably right, I mean, I don't know if I would jump to that, but if read, you go to, I don't wanna belabor it, because I don't think we're prepared to do anything tonight anyway, but go read chapter three forty seven, it's three forty seven point five oh through point five six five. It's not real long, there's like ten statutes, specifically the definitions in there. And so if the dog, here's the other reason to table it, if the dog is euthanized, you don't have to do anything.
Right.
Then you're done.
Right.
So if the dog is not euthanized, I think this is the type of situation. When I was writing the animal ordinance, people asked me, what about all this stuff I put in there about dangerous dogs, this is why. And I said, it probably won't happen once in ten years, and what happens? Like, three months later, we got one, and I'm, so I'm dealing with two of them in other cities right now, two of these issues, so.
Or do we require, I think, I asked, I, when I called, I called Jerelyn today, and she said Renee was the one that had been handling it. But is it, like, require the owner to prove vet records that this has happened?
So, no, he doesn't have to euthanize it, he has no obligation to do that.
But he said he, but he said he was going to.
Which takes all the work away from you.
Where's it at?
It's in, it's in one of the reports, there's a bunch of reports here.
In the report here.
It's in his, it's in his statement.
He made an appointment.
Yeah, I scheduled an appointment for Wednesday, ten thirteen twenty one, to euthanize the Rottweiler. So what you need to do, Jerelyn, I can give you instructions after this, but you've gotta. Call him and ask if he did that.
I have to call the resident?
The owner of the dog.
Okay.
You're now the animal control authority, or somebody is, I mean, I'm not. So you've gotta follow up on that, and then if he says yes, you've gotta get the record from the vet.
Right, you can ask for the vet record.
You gotta ask him, where, where, where that, which vet did that, and you gotta follow up and get that and keep it for your records.
And it says.
Where, where does it say is euthanized?
Yes, so it's on, it's under the statement, it's the, yeah, third page, three quarters of the way down. Second to last bullet on the second block of bullets. Right, right here.
On page, under owner's statements, and then second to last bullet.
So, and then if he didn't euthanize it, I think you need to send an email to the council and copy the statutes in chapters forty seven point five oh, the definitions.
And send it to who?
I guess the city council, or I think you should decide who's gonna do that, or who's gonna be your animal control authority, I don't think it says in your code. But the statutes obligate the jurisdiction where it happens to do this. And so, when I was doing the animal ordinance, I thought through that, and I was like, well, who's gonna do that? Like, because most cities, they don't have an animal control authority, the chief of police does it, but you don't have a chief of police. So then who does it? Does Kane do it? Maybe.
Kane, you do it.
So, but this could, this could come up again, so you might as well figure that out. So I don't think you have to, especially since he said he's gonna euthanize it, I can table it, but that's what you need to do immediately, and then. Because the theory is, he's in quarantine too, the dog was in quarantine, like, the theory is, you don't wanna wait. If, if the dog is dangerous or potentially dangerous, and I know enough to know that it might be, it might not be dangerous, it might just be potentially dangerous. There's registration requirements that go along with that, that you've gotta follow through, and there is liability to the city, because you're required to do it by law. Kick the can, and then the dog bites another person, that's where there's problems. So I didn't know this, I didn't know this was on the agenda, that's what I would do in the immediate, and if the dog got euthanized. Dog, and that one, but then I think you might wanna put it on the agenda to decide, you know, who's gonna work with the sheriff department to, the animal control authority. Um, because, because ultimately, it really shouldn't be the council, so then the council has to vote every time there's a dangerous dog. Every single declaration that's made, and that's, that's putting a lot on the city council to just be the judge, you know, of every, of everything, but.
We had one, two, three years ago, of a dangerous dog, and the owner came in, and there was, the dog's running loose, and so. It wasn't euthanized, but it was definitely on a chain anytime it was outside.
Well, that's in the statute, you have to be in a proper enclosure, so I just dealt with one where we had to prosecute them. And the guy had been charged nineteen times, nineteen times, the dog's running out large, and the kid, the dog had bit a kid, and I'll just tell you. I've been to a lot of contentious city council meetings, I have never seen a group of angry people ever as angry as that meeting. And it wasn't just the family of the kid, it was a lot of people. So you wanna make sure that you follow through on that, don't just.
I would call tomorrow morning.
Don't just do nothing.
Yep, I will call, I will know.
Just table everything else till December?
We have consent agenda?
No.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Can we approve consent?
Let's, we need to approve a consent agenda.
Yeah, I move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
So, do you have a motion, do we have a second to table new business?
I was.
Jim, seconds, okay. All in favor to table the new business to the December, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have a motion by Lori, and second by me to consent agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's approved. Make a motion to meeting adjourn at nine eighteen. Second. Comments?
Good night.
Thank you, Lizzie.
Thank you, thanks, Lizzie.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.